Everybody? Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Workshop Meeting today. It's Tuesday, January the 9th, 2024. It is 9:01 a.m. and we are in the community wing of City Hall. I would ask that you please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. And following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
We'll move to public comment before we start with public part -- I'm sorry, public participation. It is at this workshop that our new meeting procedures and rules take effect that we had voted on on a prior meeting, which means that we have increased the public's chance to participate with public comment, specifically during workshop meetings. The public is invited to comment after each agenda item. With regards to our meeting rules, we subscribe as closely as we can to the Robert's Rules of Order. I will insist, moving forward, that both on the dais and from the public, that we allow one speaker at a time to speak. So I will ask my fellow city council members to receive an acknowledgement, a recognition to speak, and I would also ask the public at all times to show the respect and courtesy that you would want as you approach the podium and speak, and that in between speakers, that time is not for anything but the beginning of the next speaker's comments. And this is not a forum, a Q and A, or a discussion. This is the public's chance to comment for the record on any item that they would choose to speak on for up to and no more than three minutes. So the rules are really quite straightforward and simple, and we will adhere to them as closely as we possibly can. And the sheriff's deputy is aware of the rules and regulations and will support my efforts as well. Are there any questions from city council members regarding the policy and procedure of the meetings? I would urge you, when you can, just to review them again. It's a relatively short list of policies and procedures, and if you have a question or comment, you know, workshops are a good time to talk about them, and maybe at the next workshop, if there's something that you would like to further discuss, I would be happy to do that here in the sunshine. Anything at the moment?
The only question I have, Mayor, is if we would like advice of council prior to something moving forward, are we permitted during discussion to ask for that?
So the only thing I would ask is that, so the way the rules currently read is that you would tell me that you want the advice of council, and then I will let council know, so you'll have a direct conversation.
Fair enough, thank you.
That way, again, I'm just trying to keep it orderly so that we've got one speaker at a time, so that everybody can follow what that speaker is saying. But yes, agreed, understood.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilman Hyer.
At last council meeting, the meeting started kind of getting moving very quickly. And as you know, and several people know that I do wear hearing apparatus, so I did not hear some of what was going on at that particular time. And I had intended to vote one particular way, however, things did work out. But I want to make sure that I hear exactly what is going on when it comes time to make a vote on something.
So how can we help?
Well, I would like for either each district to go by order to vote. That's a request. If it can't be done, that way it's fine. Or just have the clerk repeat the question to me, so that I'm clear on what is going on, because I don't always hear well. And everything was moving very fast at that last meeting, as everyone knows. So that's my request.
Okay, so if I may suggest that there is an order which we've been following. I'm not sure the order is set in stone. However, I think it would be advisable that we ask the clerk to repeat the motion each time a motion is made. Does anybody have a problem with that? I think that's would help the clerk as well as each of us. Would that be okay?
Yes.
And then if you would like it further repeated, I'll leave it up to you to ask for that, if that's fair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Is that all that?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and again, let me just close out by, for city council and for the public, to maximize the efforts and the effectiveness of city council, and to provide the best possible service we can to the city, I think we all have to take a moment to respect each other, you know, as neighbors in the audience and on the dais as well, I'm sorry, in every way we possibly can. So again, I will do my best to make sure that decorum is respected here at our city council workshops and meetings at every workshop and meeting. So with that, I thank you. And I would open up the dais now for the first member of the public that would like to comment to me. But let me just, I'm sorry, let me read the instructions first, okay? Please stay there. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas, or available from the communications marketing director, who is sitting in the back with her hand up. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, that will again help us keep the decorum present in the room at all times during the meeting, and I welcome you to the podium and look forward to your comments, sir.
Mayor Alvin, members of the council. My name is John Romansky.
If you would, just pull it a little closer so we can hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, the whole box actually slides if you want to slide the whole box towards you.
Okay. Good enough.
All right. Reason I'm here is I'm mad. I'm mad as heck, because it seems like Palm Coast, in general, has not only let me down, but residents that are dealing with these flood issues, new bills that are over elevation. And I personally, you know, Flagler Sheriff said, see something, say something. I filed a, three cases, one on Sea Trail, a house that's being built between two brand-new houses, that is, the elevation is very high. And the second one, that is, the thorn in my side, is at 11 Seaton Valley Path.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon?
11 Seaton Valley.
Seaton Valley Path. They cleared the lot, they brought in dirt, they leveled it out, they put the footprint on it, and with that, I filed a case, because, and I have a picture that shows the dirt versus my fence, and it's very easy to see that at this point, it's approximately a foot higher than my elevation. My first case went in on the 26th of December and was closed on the 27th, and I was told that inspectors would be sent out, the current grade will not be the final grade. Well, I might not be the sharpest crayon in the box, but a final grade and the grade for the slab are two different things. At any rate, I was fortunate enough on the 28th to meet up with two of your swell and stormwater management people. And they told me it appeared that it was too high and that the setback may be wrong. They would let me know, and I heard nothing. I even sent an email to Mr. Danko. Nothing was done. Two days later, they're bringing in forms. Now, if this picture shows dirt approximately a foot higher, add another eight inches of concrete on top of that, I don't know what else to say. It's going to be over the elevation, and my property's going to get flooded, plain and simple. And, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City Manager, do you want to take the opportunity, which is a little bit out of order, but to offer your report that had been requested by council regarding these issues? I just get us moving, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. And as I give my introduction, I would ask Carl Cody to come up to give a status of our caseload and what we're doing for action. So I'll start with an update on the technical manual. You may have heard this. Members of the public may not be aware of what the technical manual is. It's basically the development handbook of how we construct single-family residents' homes and numerous other development projects. And per city council's direction, we have accelerated the technical manual exercise. And late last week, we did receive a formal response from the Home Builders Association, and I was made aware of this yesterday. So we're accelerating that exercise of looking at our technical manual and the elevations, and also how swales are directed in new homes, and how that affects existing homes. So we're very proud that we're making tremendous progress pretty quickly on the technical manual. But to the case management, Carl, if you can come up and provide an update, I also see a familiar face at the comment card table as well. So I would just ask for just a quick snapshot of our response in the field and through case management.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just to give you an update from last week, the caseload number, cases have gone up. There were 125 last week. This week, they're up to 148. We have been out to 75 of those cases at this point in time. We have reached out to all residents. There are 16. We are still waiting to hear back from them to coordinate and schedule a visit to the property. So that's currently where we're at with the caseload itself. We do have someone from our staff here today, sitting at the table, so residents here that are filling out some of those cards, she can look up specifically if you're scheduled, when it's scheduled, and give them updates on their particular case. Make sure that they actually do have a case in the system, so they can easily speak with her, and she can take them outside in the hallway or in the back, in the waterfront room.
And my only concluding update is that as we progress with the technical manual, we do expect to bring that sooner than previously advised. Originally, it was in February, we were going to give a comprehensive update, and so we accelerated that as well.
So I do have a question, because I've heard it enough times now. My concern is this, that a resident is making contact with the city, hopefully in the right way, either by phone or with Palm Coast Connect or whatever, and a case is initiated. But I seem to be hearing repeatedly that those cases are being closed out, or they're not, or there's a lack of, there seems to be a lack of communication in between their initiation of the case and what happens next. Can you just help me with that?
Most of these require several steps. You know, a lot of, lots of times, it starts with those first two representatives from the department going out and meeting with the resident to understand the issue at hand, trying to gather some facts. You know, we get a preset load of questions as to where does it happen, how often, how long does the water stay? You know, there's various information gathering from the resident about the issue at hand with the lot retaining some stormwater. And then from there, there are a lot of times when we are using other staff throughout the city, either we're pulling up records of adjacent properties or surrounding properties, looking at those elevations, we're sometimes sending our surveyor out to take some shots on that survey system. Sometimes we're looking at our stormwater system downstream and to see, you know, because potentially it could be nothing to do with some of the new home builds, it could maybe be something with our stormwater system itself. We do not close many cases. The cases we do close is they have duplicate cases in the system. We're only keeping one case open. So there are times when we are closing cases, but that's because they have two or three cases, and we're closing those. So they always have at least one case open in the system. The ones we do close for these infill lots, we're not necessarily closing them, we're re-categorizing them, because they may call and talk about flooding, but they're more concerned about the water in their swell. They don't necessarily have infill lots, stormwater retainage on their property. So we're moving them from the infill lot to a different category and addressing it if there is a swell issue or not. If there is no swell issue, then yeah, we are closing those cases.
So, but the fact of the matter is, there is still 75, roughly half, of the cases that have been initiated from a resident to the city that we have yet to make contact with.
No, no, we've been out to 75.
And there's 148, so...
Right. Last week was 125, and by the end of January, we're hoping to get through most of those 125.
I'm sorry, by when?
By the end of January, I mean.
By the end of this month, you will make contact with all of the cases that you're aware of.
Well, I know, we'll get to 148, but... A majority of them.
Is that realistic?
So, Mayor, we've dedicated a representative to only manage these cases. That was Carl's reference to our representative that has come today. It is our top priority to make that initial contact with these cases, but to, I think what Carl was making a point to is that we get new cases daily. It's a process, but it is a priority to us to make that initial contact with the resident. And I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that we're already taking steps as part of the permitting process to basically elevate our review and the professionals involved in that process. Is that correct, Carl?
Yeah, we've already, you know, even though the technical manual's not formally implemented for, you know, since this began, we started working with the builders on those elevations and having them reduce them, and there's been no kickback from the builders on us kind of enforcing that new technical manual changes, even though they're not in effect yet. They've been happy to oblige and make adjustments. So, you know, we will be formally adopting that technical manual here shortly, but it is something that we're really paying a lot of attention to, you know, and have been.
So can you just confirm to me, City Manager, that you are receiving some form of update from your staff regarding these issues every day?
Yes. In fact, weekly, I get an overall comprehensive analysis of how many lots are there, and I have access to Palm Coast Connect case management system, and I do cross-reference activities that staff are delivering to what's being memorialized in the cases.
Because obviously, I guess it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, when there's no communication or there's silence, the public can only think that nothing is happening or nothing's being done. So we need to correct that perception, so this is not the last time we'll bring this up on the dais as we move forward through this problem for as long as we need to.
Right. There will be a timeframe, right? Once we've collected all the data and done our full analysis, there may be, you know, some of them are already completed now, but until we present to council and put these buckets and do, you know, present you with our findings, and then working on the next steps from there. So there is going to be a period of time when residents are going to think, well, nothing's been done, you know, until we present that in February to council at the workshop and look at options of how we may move forward, then, you know, there's going to be a period of time that we may have completed our analysis and nothing's happened. So there's going to be that timeframe.
All right, so since I asked for the City Manager's report, this, we'll go back to public comment. I don't want to deny anybody public comment. Any question, anything that we can handle at this moment?
I do have a couple of questions, Carl. Out of the folks that we have visited, have we been able to solve any of their problems?
There, we do propose, we don't necessarily design a fix for some of the existing homeowners. There are a couple where we were working with the builder of the new home, and he made adjustments to his grading to help ensure that his water would stand his property. There was one that was an issue. His water was going on the property, and he is fixing that. I don't know if that work's been complete yet, but he is working on fixing it. However, with existing home builds, we are identifying what may be an issue, because sometimes it's on their property, whether it may be some landscaping curbing that was installed, or the way their gutters may work on their house or drain, or something with their particular property that's actually not helping with the retainage, or, you know, not allowing the water to flow out. So we've been giving them some recommendations of things that they could do to help alleviate, you know, their issue.
Okay, and that technical manual will be back here next week, presented to us?
Yes, next week, we plan to walk you through our recommended changes of what will be implemented in that technical manual.
Okay.
It won't be for adoption, it'll just be, you know, because it's not a policy thing that would be voted on, it's just something that we just want to make you aware of, these are the changes that we're implementing.
And we'll discuss those changes with you and everything else. But from now, from this moment forward, though, we are using that, those changes, correct?
Yeah, we have been already for, you know, you know, since this started, we, you know, started looking at elevations and coming up with some assessments.
Well, I would just ask everyone here to keep in mind, we have a lot of folks that have been affected by this, and that continues, obviously, to increase. And at some point, we're going to have to take care of those folks in one way or another and offer some support. And I would ask everyone on staff and on this council to keep that in their mind and start possibly coming up with suggestions on how we can help those folks in our community that have been affected by this. I think that's incredibly important.
Councilwoman Pontieri, have commented this time on the report.
Just quickly, I do, I appreciate staff escalating the changes to the technical manual. It's my understanding that we sent the proposed changes to the Home Builders Association back on November 17th, and them just now getting back to us this past Friday is a little discouraging from my standpoint, just knowing that it took that long for something this important to come back. But I'm glad to see that it has now and that we're moving forward, and I would encourage, when our residents are being affected like this, I don't want to have to make a motion for a pause on building to get movement. That should not be necessary. Apparently, it was. I'm glad that it was supported by council to an extent, and I'm hopeful that we never even get there. I'm hopeful that the technical manual comes before us on Tuesday of next week, that we're able to agree on the changes that staff has suggested, and that it will provide some real relief in the future to our current residents who are having new builds next to them. Excuse me, with regards to the Palm Coast Connect issues, I know City Manager and I spoke about, we spoke about this yesterday. I would really encourage us as an organization to figure out a better mechanism to communicate with residents, because when a resident sees that their case is closed, they don't know what's going on behind the curtain. So it's very discouraging. They feel like they're not getting anywhere, they feel like they're not getting any traction, they feel like they're not being listened to, and that is not what we stand for. We all sit up here, we actually voted to allow more public comment, because we care about what the residents feel and think. So we really need to figure out a fix to that, communication-wise. So I encourage, whether it's a technical, a, I'm having a brain fart, I apologize, a technology issue, glitch, whatever it may be, or whether it's a training issue, just that as an organization, we figure out how to better communicate with our residents and let them know exactly what's going on with their cases, so that they're kept in the loop at all times, and they have the same knowledge we have.
I just have a quick guide. Yes. I agree with Councilwoman Pontieri and also Vice Mayor Danko on the issues that they stated. The question that I have is, I know that the technical manner, manual is not complete, but the steps that you're taking and asking builders to change in their format for building these properties, are you finding that any of them are effective?
Yes. Some of the changes we made are reducing the elevation of the new home construction, and so when we see some come in where we see we can have them make changes to drop that elevation, we're going back to them with those proposed modifications, and they're revising and resubmitting it.
Yeah, because I am seeing that a lot of the lots that are in the area, some of them are remaining on the elevation where they're level with the other properties, but however, I am seeing a lot of them that are really way much higher. And the other thing, too, I'm hoping that we do not have to impose a moratorium on building, because I know that it will affect a lot of people. So hopefully, the changes that are being made will be effective, and we'll be able to rectify this matter. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Clufus?
I would just like to reemphasize the criticality of our enhanced communication with our residents. I think that's one of the most important points. I think Councilwoman Pontieri really struck a chord there, where if cases are being closed, the level of communication is even that much more important for residents to understand where exactly in the process they are. But I am looking forward to our next opportunity to review the technical guide. Last week, I requested that we take a comprehensive look on the changes and whether or not those will actually have an impact on the situations that we have with the individual homes and retaining the floodwaters. But I am very thankful to our staff being very diligent, and thank you for allocating a specific resource, so that we have a dedicated resource actually paying attention and being very diligent with this manner. But I appreciate all of our councils, basically, you know, the emphasis that we're putting on this, I think, is appropriate, and I thank the staff for their efforts.
And we really have stepped up our communications with Melissa, starting in that role, in that position here just a few weeks ago. That was one of the big, you know, things we got, was some of the cases were being closed, and not all the relevant information was being passed along to the resident as to why it was closed, or what the outcome was, or what may be potentially scheduled for upcoming work. So she has worked on some responses, has really initiated that feedback, and if we are closing a case because it's duplicate, we're making sure that's noted and cited, and they're fully made aware of that's why this case is being closed, is because you have another one open over here. So we really have been trying to address that communication front to keep citizens up to date. She's also doing that initial feedback about when we're scheduled, trying to keep them up to date, that, you know, we're working on getting you out there, really trying to do some touchpoints along the way and keep them informed.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. City Manager, any final comment?
I would just applaud staff on elevating these concerns and having that impression given to the citizen on our, on our status. And I know that also, I think I saw a case yesterday, Melissa, that a lot of people have been traveling over the holidays, and that has been, you know, something that we keep track of. When they get back, we invite an opportunity to get a status update. So the holidays have been part of the arithmetic on the response rate, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cody. So with that, I would resume public comment. So next speaker, please, either one. Go ahead, just...
Kyrin Romansky, my husband was the one that was up here. This particular unit he was talking about is a duplex, and I'm going to put a personal view, and there may be statistics you guys are not aware of. It doesn't matter whether it's a duplex, it's going to affect somebody down the line. Now, these builders have built these duplexes, and nobody's had a chance to live in them. They don't know what it brings. They don't know what it brings. We're here to tell you that on a Sunday morning, my granddaughter calls. She just moved into one of the duplexes, first people to live in it, nice little duplex. That first and last big rain that we had, I get a call Sunday morning as we're on our way to church, Grandma, please, can you come quick? My living room's flooded. Now she has a four-year-old, totally handicapped daughter and, and she also has a newborn. She was, she lives on her own. Well, basically she, we got her all situated and then she called the, the leasing people and they said, well, it's probably coming through the window. We were there, we know it came through the floor. It did not come through the window, did not run down the wall, nothing. Now this builder, he's done. Here's this duplex out there that leaks from the floor up and due to that heavy rain that we had, it flooded. We were able to get her so she, it was livable, but these are statistics that you aren't seeing in your paperwork. It's, we tried to be proactive to get this taken care of before they even built anything. We're giving you the option here to just come on out, regrade, do what you got to do before people like us become the result. So just so you know, you're probably not even aware of people living in, in this because they don't have any way to complain. The unit's built, it is what it is. So that's, that's what we want you to understand, that there are people out there that aren't even on your radar yet.
Ma'am, could you please provide that address again? Excuse me? The address where that occurred again?
Yeah, she's in the U section. I can give it to you.
If you fill out a comment card for us, then we can follow up directly with you.
On the, the unit that my husband just spoke up is on Seaton Valley and it's a duplex as well, 11 Seaton Valley.
Right. And if you'd be kind enough to fill out that card for us so that we can follow up directly, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I think this lady was next.
Hi, my name is Laura Fickett. I'm a business owner here in town for Fickett Financial Coaching and 3D Advertising. I'm also the former president of BNI Business Networking International and on the Board of Directors for the Professional Women of Flagler County. And I'm here to support number two on your agenda, the approving of the concession lease agreement with Redefined Food Company, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a testimonial about Redefined Food Company. There's a lot of places to eat here in town, as I'm sure you know.
If you want, you can make your comment at the time we consider that on the agenda.
Okay.
Or now, it's up to you.
I'm already here.
Okay.
So there are a lot of places to eat in town and as a business owner, I frequently meet with people in town at, you know, various places, but there are not a lot of places to eat that are healthy choices. We're not meeting at places like McDonald's. That's not a preferable choice for me. Maybe it is for some. And this is one of the only places that I'm not sure if any of you have frequented, but that has gluten-free options. You can eat there and you don't feel sluggish, horrible. And I'm sure there'll be other comments to the like that testify about the food for this, from this organization, but what you may not know about the owners of this organization, it's a family-run business. Jody, who's here today, she actually is a respected member, a female business owner of the community. Not only does she attend regular meetings for networking and network with all the other businesses here in town, but inside the city marketplace where their operation is, she organizes all kinds of events there to help all the other business owners in city marketplace like scavenger hunts and Halloween parties. And she's constantly trying to draw people and clients into not just her business, but everyone else. And I've had the pleasure of having meetings at her restaurant and when you see people walk in, it's almost like she knows everyone in town, like they're all family, whether it's workers coming in for lunch or mothers running in to get clean eating food options for their family. And so I just wanted to come and comment today so that you would support number two and approve that license for a Redefined Food Company. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, who was next?
I'll wait.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Jeffrey Saib. In some situations, it can be difficult for a person in a position to recognize the people that could be called constituents. This is not one of those situations. The constituents for the Palm Coast City Council are right here looking at you. The residents attending the meetings, speaking out, may have thousands of other residents that share their views, but choose not to attend these meetings. It's true, there is a perception, and it's a shame, among many residents that what they think, say, or do about the conditions of their neighborhood's drainage, roads, public safety, the list goes on, their voice doesn't matter. It's also true that many residents pay little attention to what is happening here and so are surprised when a negative event occurs. This is why it's critical for you to listen to all who come here to speak and act to remedy our concerns unless they are way off base, which I don't hear. Rather, they are spot-on identifying important issues apparently overlooked by staff in their rush to help those they think are their constituents, the stakeholders, as they are called. I call them special interests. Let's take a look at the record as of late. We have the city staff's recommendation for the necessary step of shortening meetings' length by reducing public comments' time. Human resources professionals state that a meeting length of two to three hours is the maximum for attentiveness and efficacy of results, as opposed to last week's almost six-hour meeting. Whoever is setting up the meeting agenda should know by now, these very controversial development proposals should be placed one at a time. The city's development planning process seems to not be providing the services that residents require. When discussing the placement of a development next to an already existing neighborhood, a city planner states that compatibility is whatever they say it is. The attorney for the developer forgetting relevant information requiring doing it all over again. And residents having the unenviable necessity of having to retain legal counsel to duel it out with the developer's attorney. If this is business as usual, we are in for a rough ride. My recommendation to the council is to listen to the residents and then act on their concerns. Listen and act. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and everybody in the room. I just would like to first on the record, my name is Candy Stevens and I'm the founder of Flooded in Flagler County. I'm the one that started this, I guess, not knowing what I was getting into. I just would like to on the record request a weekly letter from the city manager's secretary to be sent to my email so I can keep my group up to date. I kind of feel like I have a citizens advisory, citizen advisory board going here in the city with the meetings that I'm having regarding the flooding and I'm finding out other issues as some of the members up here of my community have just told you about. It's also National Law Enforcement Day, so I would like to say happy National Law Enforcement Day. It's a really hard job to do nowadays. So I hear through the grapevine that the city manager is saying that the flood zones are not the issue in the infill lots. She is correct about that because the infill lots on my map are not in the flood zone. The flood zone is Graham Swamp area and the area over close to the beach, according to FEMA. So I would like to know who is the one deciding what the heights are in all of the developing properties in the infill lots? I want to know who decides that. On the record, I want, I want that question answered. Who decides that? Who is ultimately responsible for that decision? I have some solutions for you on the infill lots that a lot of the people in my group have brought to my attention. Height restrictions is the first one. The second one is you need to make the developers put drainage, permanent drainage, not a hump of grass that's going to wash away after we mow twice. Permanent drainage, concrete, plastic tubing, permanent drainage in the property that is being developed that goes out to the swell. So it's going to have to be different because a corner property, of course, will have to maybe have two. I need one. Some people might need three. You're going to have to have somebody that knows how to grade and how to build inside of a neighborhood to decide that. Some of us have already put that drainage in, so you're going to have to help those people somehow reimburse them. I think that you need to keep continuing to looking into the grants, federal and state, to help those of us that have already paid for it. And you also need to have the developers, I think, chip in and start an account so they can pay for some of this too, because they are benefiting from all of this development in our city. You need to make sure you develop carefully, thoughtfully for the future of all of us that are here, because that's why we come. It matters to us. We're all going to be here for the long haul. You might not be, sir.
Thank you. And if you would, regarding the communication, if you make sure we have your contact info.
I do, I fill it out every time. I appreciate them adding the date on it now, too.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Gary Kunis, C-section. In front of you, you'll find a report that was sent to code enforcement, a request of Barbara Grossman dated August 23. None of that, as long there has entered, been anything done about it. Nothing. After I was promised a meeting in two months and a hearing, nothing of those three were done. When I'm on patrol with the Marines Sheriff's boat in the canals, I found three properties with no black aprons around them on Santa Bell Bend and Old Oak Drive. Three months it took to have anything done. Meanwhile, all the water and rainwater is washing the sand into the canals. It's, it's, that's inecrisable. If, and also in the sheets I sent you and your emails and texts, I sent you an aerial picture of an eroded, what they call riprap, where in the canal report, it was never brought, brought to surface. It was hidden. And I sent you pictures of that from aerial, how that hull wall has dropped a foot in the last year from all the rainwater and that water is washed into the canals. The neighbor of that same property uses his boat to power wash, power load on their floating dock, blowing more sand into the canal each time he uses the outboard motor to push the boat up on the float, when there's electric motors and hand cranks that are available. And that was reported to code enforcement a while ago and I just sent you each an email. The two that I didn't have the texts on, I couldn't send you the picture of the power loading, but I have it if you want to see it. It just, it just takes too long for anything to be done. In reference to the properties, when we moved here eight years ago, I wanted to put sod in and I was told I needed a permit to do it. Well, why? Well, we don't want sod to be higher than your neighbor's property. Here we're talking a couple inches. Now we're talking feet. Somebody's not doing their job. I read in the local paper that, oh, we, we looked into it and, and the people with the lower houses are going to have to put their own drainage system in. That's not right. It's up to the people who are building these homes to fix that before it gets out of hand. And the level should be well documented before they even construct. The survey crews go out, check this stuff. Somebody's not paying attention to what's going on and it, it needs to be addressed now. I mean, why the people that have the lower houses or the original houses have to pay to drain the water out from a property that's built too high next to them? All this thing needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. The speeding on Florida Park Drive seems like some of the people are pushing the limits because it seems like they're getting faster and faster. A lot of it seems to happen after the businesses down in Island Walk close at night and then there's a lot of speeding coming, coming north on Florida Park Drive. And also early in the morning, there's a lot. And a lot of these cars have some pretty loud mufflers and there's no way you're going to sleep through it. And so I just want to mention that. Also, the road is, it really needs some repairs. If you go north on Florida Park Drive from Palm Coast Parkway, you'll notice that all the way up to about Farragut, that road is in horrible shape. It has really been beat up by the heavy trucks going through there. Also, you need to take a close look at the wear that's at 22 Florida Park Drive. That road has begot a dip in it now. So I know the other two wears on Florida Park Drive have already been repaired. So I would tell you to take a close look at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Greetings, American members of the council. I just want to start off by saying thank you to a few individuals. Mr. Danko and Ms. Hyder actually came out to one of the meetings that Candy had held and I know Ms. Pontieri also did an interview with them and sort of addressed the issue. And I think everyone on the council is taking this flooding matter extremely seriously as it should be taken and I appreciate that. I do think we need to move forward just a little bit faster with this. I, I know at the meeting, and I don't think she's here today, but, and I'm not trying to speak out of turn for her, but Ms. Carol Brasfield has a very sad situation. I mean, the women's elderly, they're literally days away from pouring concrete foundation and I, I mean, she's literally at a loss for words. She's looking for a Realtor right now, as she says, and she just feels like nothing getting done. And I, I could only put myself in a position of seeing that as my grandmother is someone that I care about and I would hate to see that happen to anyone. One other thing that I just want to bring to the attention of the city council is that obviously each week, these number of cases are increasing. Last week it was 120-something, this week it's 148. One of the things I have consistently heard from a lot of the residents who are experiencing flooding issues, who have not brought this to the attention of the city council, is they are extremely concerned that they are now going, they prior were not in a flood zone and are now concerned that if they report this, show up to a city council meeting, show their face, have their name and address associated with it, that they are now going to be placed under flood zone and have to pay for the subsequent insurance that follows that. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind, that this issue is widespread. People are afraid to report this in some aspects, but I also want to say thank you very much to all the council members who came out and attended. Mayor, I would encourage you to do the same. I don't know if Candy invited you, but I think it's important that everyone, everyone attends. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Darlene Shelley, Hidden Lakes, Palm Coast. Today I just have an ask of you and just a few questions. On January 5th, we observed a plume of smoke coming from the woods on Old Kings Road. As I've done three times before for actual forest fires, I called the non-emergency line to report the smoke to see if perhaps Graham Woods was on fire. They did investigate while I was on the phone and told me that it was an approved burn coming from the area of Colbert and Roberts Road. My ask of you today is that the city considers putting a ban on burning of developers' wood. The only folks that benefit from that are the developers who don't have to pay to remove that wood. Whether or not this is a city of Palm Coast issue or a county issue, I would like to pursue it as much as we can because it is not fair to the citizens of Palm Coast to have to breathe hazardous smoke so the developer doesn't have to pay to remove the debris that cannot be sold. So that brings me to the question, is smoke hazardous to our health? Are 5G radio towers hazardous to our health? Is excessive traffic and the emissions from thousands of additional vehicles hazardous to our health? Is lead falling from excessive plane traffic, landing and taking off at the airport hazardous to our health? All of these topics are factually hazardous, hazardous to the health of the citizens of Palm Coast. My concern is that the city staff and planners state time and time again that these types of developments will not be a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Palm Coast, when they factually will diminish our quality of life and negative... of Palm Coast, when they factually will diminish our quality of life and negatively affect our health and welfare. So as required in the Land and Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, I request that you take these matters seriously and listen to the residents of Palm Coast, who stand up here time and time again, begging you to follow the rules that are in place to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Jeremy Davis, P-section. I'm on Palm Coast Builder, hold on, what is it? Palm Coast Gov, Building, Permits. Book up permit number. You ready to write this down? That's the property next to my house. As we go through the notes here, I have started complaining since July on this. And I can go through the notes and see there has been no corrections as of 12/1923. No corrections have been made. In addition, there is dirt and the silt in the roadway that needs to be cleaned off. There has been plenty of time to make these corrections. From date of first drainage, priority status changed. It says, "These have been noted since August, and nothing has been done." That's why I'm here, and that's why I'm mad. I know Tuesday I came in and was very, very peeved off, because I have been coming to you since October, saying these things, and you still have done nothing. Granted, their city council members have started to do stuff, but it's taken this long to make anything happen. I can't even use my pool because of flood from the mud coming into my pool. I have two silk fences around my property because of this. That doesn't seem common sense at all. Anyways. So a conflict of interest. Should I go into that? Yeah, let me pull it up. I've got plenty of time. A conflict of interest occurs when an individual's personal interest, family, friendships, financial or social factors could compromise his or her judgment, decisions, or actions in the workplace. Government agencies take conflicts of interest so seriously that they are regulated. These individuals should be excused from discussion and voting on any new bill construction. David Alphen, Mayor, City, worked as a realtor. License status, active. Ed Danko, Deputy Mayor, his girlfriend works as a realtor, active. Catherine Hyder, real estate agent, active. BMP Committee, Sandra Schenk, active license. There's more other people noted on here, and I will bring the picture if I need to. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Anna Maria Long, Executive Officer, Flagler Home Builders Association. The previous speaker is correct to consider all the residents' concerns. As a reminder, stakeholders are also residents who are also business owners in the city of Palm Coast. A moratorium has three major negative effects throughout the community. Those are within the private sector, closing businesses, laying off employees. We are, as you are well aware, I'm sure, in a time that many residents are paycheck to paycheck, or just a few paychecks away from dire strengths within their households, homelessness, times of food uncertainty, et cetera. It would also lead to public sector troubles, potentially laying off or furloughing your own city employees, and within future development. As you know, when a developer is looking at coming to a new area, first thing they're going to do, their realtor sends them, hey, I've got some stuff in Palm Coast I want you to look at. They're going to look, Google Palm Coast development, and maybe a few other key terms, and moratorium is going to pop up. It's going to pop up not only for this recent talk, but for the backstore moratorium that occurred a few years ago, and that's going to be a negative for them and may just shut them down completely. Additionally, a moratorium will not solve the problem that's at hand. In the last 40-plus years that, in Palm Coast, since ITT, we have been through at least four drainage plans, which have varied greatly and have been really at odds with each other, and that makes each lot unique. So the lot that I live on, for example, where the house was built in 1978, I believe, was made for the lot to be drained off into the lots next to it. Oddly enough, now that there's other lots around it, they all drain onto me. I can't go to war with my neighbor because she's my mother. That would be awkward. But we do have, you know, we've created some drainage between us. The current technical manual, as I've stated, is problematic. However, it does have one important tenet, and I'm going to roughly paraphrase, that new construction must retain its own water and convey to the front of the property. Pretty simple. If the technical manual is being properly enforced, as it currently stands and will continue to stand through the draft, must convey, must retain, and then convey its own water, each lot, then the residents here today should not be experiencing what they are. If the technical manual is being properly enforced, these folks should not be experiencing these problems. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And...
Ms. Mayor, I just want to ask a question of our city manager. Can, we just heard from Mr. Kounas about his complaints that he's left printed copies up. Can you have Barbara Grossman or someone with code enforcement get in touch with him to hopefully follow up and deal with these complaints?
Yes, absolutely. And Mr. Kounas does make contact with Ms. Grossman, and it's reciprocal. So I'll make sure on these particular complaints, we'll do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Just briefly, so I do want to comment, Mr. Johnson, with regards to Ms. Brassfield. We have escalated her case to make sure that she is being considered, as Mr. Cody stated, with regards to enforcement, I guess, I don't want to say premature enforcement, but current enforcement of the changes that we're working on with the technical manual. So we've been in contact with her. I've personally been in contact with her, so she is being considered. I just want to put out one cautionary note for my fellow council members based on another comment. I more than encourage our community members to get together. I think it's great that a Facebook page was created. That is a very big sign of community. I've met with residents out at some of the properties. I encourage that. I want to caution, please, my fellow council members, about violating sunshine, because if we do have to vote on a moratorium, and there is communication between any of us at a meeting with regards to how we're going to vote, what our intentions are, anything of that manner, it can compromise what we are trying to do here. So please, it's just a cautionary note. I encourage meeting with residents all the time, but just let's remember sunshine. Let's keep that in mind. Let's be very, very cognizant of what we say and where we say it, so that we don't compromise our ultimate goals that we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hyder, anything?
I would just like to address the issue with the young man, Jeremy. And I've spoken to him before, and Jeremy, I really do understand your concern. And I'm just hoping that us as city council and staff can look into this matter for him, because I understand that he is very upset about it, and I too understand your concern and everybody else that's having to deal with this. So if we can find a way that staff could look into his matter more, I would really appreciate that from us as council members and also the city staff. Thank you.
So that's a comment for city manager, I would think, right?
Is there a way, Denise, that his matter could be looked into a little bit closer?
Absolutely.
Since it's been going on and on?
Yes, Ms. Hyder, Mayor. It's very straightforward. Please get with Melissa before you leave. If you have a case, an address, we will definitely follow up. That's part of our commitment to our citizens.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez, anything before we move on?
No, I'll just reinforce what Councilwoman Pontieri said, but I'd also like to note that if you're a resident experiencing anything, don't hesitate to reach out to the city. A gentleman spoke about possibly inclusion into a FEMA national flood hazard layer. That's not how the flood hazard layers work. You can be omitted via letter of map amendment, but if you come to the city and you say, hey, I'm having flooding issues, even if it's just water from your neighbors or your own property, you won't be added into the FEMA national flood hazard layer. So I don't want any trepidation from residents who are hesitant to reach out to the city. FEMA will not put your house into a flood zone. Those are handled completely separate.
Thank you for that. All right, with that, we'll move on to, we're now at Section E of the agenda today, which would be presentations. And our first one is a presentation from the Florida Department of Transportation. It's the FDOT five-year work program. And I have a comment, but I'll let you go ahead with your presentation first. So thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time. My name is Kathy Alexander Corbin, and I'm the Program Management Administrator at District Five. And thank you again for giving us the opportunity to come and share today about our tentative work program, which represents fiscal years 25 through 29. So what is the annual work program? So what we do is we create a plan for the upcoming five years that represents the transportation needs for our region. This includes projects that are rail, aviation, seaport, roadway, transit, multimodal. We build and we collaborate with our local partners, our NPOs, our TPOs, federal and other state agencies, as well as stakeholders, regional stakeholders, to develop the needs for our region. Each district develops their tentative work program, and this is then all combined, to become the statewide tentative work program. We manage the work program on a year-to-year basis, which is the fiscal year references. So what we're talking about today is fiscal years 25, which begins July 1st of 2024, and it runs until fiscal year 29, which is June 30th of 2029. So what you see here is some of the key dates for this tentative work program. Some of these have passed, so we can jump over those. It really takes us through our January 8th, yesterday, which was the Florida Transportation Commission, also holds a public hearing and reviews the statewide tentative program. State legislation session begins today, and it runs until March 15th. That's where the statewide tentative work program is reviewed, and ultimately, it is adopted by the Governor July 1st of 2024. So it is subject to change throughout that process until it becomes adopted. Over the last few years, we've had some key influences on our work program, very similar to what our local partners are viewing. As you can see here, the major is cost increases, and they have been very volatile in the last few years post-COVID. We continue to see those trends, those cost trends for material and resources to increase for FDOT, and it has been a major influence as we were developing the tentative work program. This really has been due to supply chain issues, as well as material and labor shortages, resource shortages, and of course, inflation, and just the conservative nature of looming recession. That also impacted us as well. What I can say, though, is over the last year, 2023, actually has been somewhat positive and optimistic. In the past years, we saw maybe one bid or no bids to some of the projects that we were putting out. And in the last year, we have seen an average of about 3.4 contractors going against our project, which is great, because it helps with those cost increases. We're seeing increases in competition, and it's really a good outlook for the upcoming year. However, that's still, it's variable. So we're just being very optimistic on what's changing in the market. So what you see here is just an indication. This department develops these cost-per-mile exhibits, kind of keeps track over what some of these cost trends are doing. And this represents a four-lane rural roadway with shoulders, and the cost of materials for a lane mile has increased from $5 million per mile in 2021 to 7.6 miles in 2023. That's a 17% increase on new construction for roadways. Further down on that one, the last line, it's really the most important one. It's the resurfacing index. The cost per mile for a resurfacing four-lane roadway has increased over 26.5% in the last year, over 40% since 2021. So as we see, we're really monitoring, they have many more roadway typicals that they manage these costs on, because it's dependent on rural, urban, and the type of roadway typical. But it's really indicative of what we're seeing. The price increases are still on the rise, just luckily has not been to the level and volatility that it's been the last few years. So as we were building the tentative work program, like I mentioned, those were some influence factors, as we have to build a program that is balanced against program area targets and revenues and allocations that we receive, both for federal and state funds. That becomes a challenge when you have that type of variability in the industry. We continue to see conservative allocation and revenue growth. The Florida Revenue Conference that was held last year really reflected those numbers were conservative in terms of growth rate. Dock stamps actually had gone down just because of the nature of increased interest for mortgage, mortgages. So that was not helping our revenues. Rental car surcharge was slightly varied, just increased slightly. And so they're not really helping with the offsetting of those increases. However, it does help, but they're very conservative. Another major item was our resurfacing program changed. This last cycle, as we were putting the work program together, they had to go back and readjust the formula, not just for the allocations, but also for the lane mile requirements for each of the districts. We are required by Florida statute to maintain a certain quality level for our state highway system. 80% is the quality level, and anything below that, we're not meeting that standard. So in order to avoid going underneath that quality threshold, they had to adjust the formula, as well as the line miles. For the district ourselves, we actually have more lane miles that we have to resurface in order to maintain that quality requirement, and our adjustment, our revenues were adjusted because of that. I should, excuse me, I should say our allocations for that resurfacing program were adjusted because of that. So that was a significant change as we were building our tentative work program. And then lastly, our contingency levels. We've all faced that volatility and inflation as well, and in the last couple of years, we really saw our contingency levels that we tried to put aside towards those really high bid results that we received in late '21, '22, and early '23. So we faced significantly low, critically low, I should say, where we had to make some calls on projects as well. So this year, as we were building the tentative, we really made responsible decisions on what those contingency levels should be, so that we continue to be ready in case of any kind of change in pricing and bid results, and also have a contingency level that is responsible for the type of projects that are going out. We build the work program, as you can see, based on the FDOT compass. These are the core functions for the department when we're determining which projects are going to be represented in our tentative work program and how we deliver the work program for our local residents. Clearly, communities are in the center of our compass. Safety is always first. We definitely want to continue to build up the resiliency for the central Florida region, continue to harden our supply chain, so we don't see some of those issues that we faced in the last couple of years, leverage technology to the extent possible across any of the activities that we have in the department, as well as through our local partners, and also develop the workforce, not just for the department, but also for our region, because it contributes to our economic growth. We build the work program, and there's always changes. The challenge always being, like I mentioned, is developing a plan that meets the programs and targets against what the financial backing that we receive from revenues and allocations. So sometimes changes are required in what was the previous five-year set. So here you see some projects that were impacted. However, not all of them were because of a lack of funding. On the top left, you see one project 444-879-1 within Volusia County. This was actually a change in funding. A capital grant was deferred by two years from fiscal year '25 to '27, and this was in coordination with the Aviation Authority. So this was actually at the request and coordination with the grant receiver. 448-456-1, LPGA Boulevard. This is an add lanes and reconstruct project. The right-of-way for that project was deferred from '26, '27 to '27, '28. It was just one year, and whenever we can minimize that impact, we will go through all lengths to do that. However, it was due to work program balancing. There just wasn't enough in one year to be able to keep that project funded, and so it did move out one year. However, the funding still remains in the upcoming five. 446-826-1, this is I-95 at Maytown Road. 446-826-1, this is I-95 at Maytown Road. This is a new interchange. The PD&E study there was programmed in '26, and it's now going to be performed in '29, and that was also coordinated with the local agency. And then on the right-hand side, you see deletions, but it's a misrepresentation. What happened there for 419-772-2, this is the I-95 at US-1 interchange. The right-of-way, which is the way it was programmed, it's just administrative coding. It was deleted in '27 and moved into a different segment, a dash three, to align with the correct transportation system. So funding has not gone away. It's really just a change in the dash sequence number. Five-year outlook for the region is what you see here. You see a total for the counties, what we have shown in the work program. Overall, we're talking over $900 million for Volusia and Flagler County within the River to Sea TPO region, and you can see the breakdown there per year. I will point out the fiscal year '27. You'll see that one slightly higher. That is because of the Moving Florida Forward initiative, or project initial, sorry. Incentive project is the US-1. These are the Governor DeSantis' projects that received additional funding over the last year, and that funding is programmed in '27. Overall, like I mentioned, $900,000, and this does include all federal and state funding. Here's a further breakdown for the different type of projects that are represented in the upcoming five years. Safety projects would be your paved shoulders, urban corridor improvements, signing and pavement markings, maybe some pedestrian improvements as well. And we have a total of 21, close to $21.5 million representative fiscal years '25 through '29. Capacity, anything that will be improving roadways to accept more vehicles, more transportation users. And here we have over $280 million in the upcoming five years. Preservation, these are the Florida statute programs. This is where the resurfacing program falls under, as well as our bridge rehabilitation repair and new bridges, replacements, excuse me. And those are by Florida statutes. So here we have two, over $281 million in the upcoming five years. Multimotor projects represents anything transit-aviation-type work, close to $172 million. Operations could be your traffic signal timing, traffic lights, and intelligent transportation system-type projects, over $7 million there. We have bike, ped, trails, projects also represented in the upcoming five years to close to $46 million. And then lastly, it's our miscellaneous. And here we have a maintenance-type projects, any landscaping. We do have truck parking facilities that are not represented in those projects, in the types listed above. So they do fall into the miscellaneous. And there's, but over $92 million for those type of projects represented in the upcoming five years. I'll now highlight some projects that, for the region, I did share this presentation with River to Sea, so that's why I include some of the projects here across their jurisdiction. Here we have resurfacing projects. Like I mentioned, our resurfacing program changed, so we're very heavy resurfacing for the upcoming five years. More than half of our bid lettings are going to be resurfacing projects. We did have to pivot from our resurfacing program. In the past, we would be able to add additional items to our resurfacing program or projects that were programmed because that was the opportunity to come and provide improvements to that roadway. However, because of the need to be able to maintain the integrity of our payment structure, we did have to pivot to its maintenance paving projects. So you will see that some of our projects now have been reduced to just milling and resurfacing and some key ADA improvements. Several of these key projects in the region here, you see the four that are listed here all have design in the first year, which is fiscal year '25, and construction occurring two years later. So here we have a total of about 20 miles of resurfacing along US-1, State Road 483, and State Road 5A. Two additional resurfacing projects within Volusia County. These totaling about 15 miles, 16 miles. One of them is along the interstate. We have Interstate I-95 project that also has design in the first year, construction in '27. And then another along State Road 40 from Lake County Line to Railroad Avenue, about $9 million, following the same schedule. Moving into Flagler County, we do have a project within the TPO limits. This is over six and a half miles, and this is along US-1. And this is currently under design. They should be coming into the tail end of it here this current year with construction in the first year of '25 of the tentative work program. Some key bike path trail projects, St. John's River to Sea Loop. Over the next several sites, I'll talk about some of these. Sand Trail program, this would be a second priority for the central program. I should mention it's second only to the Coast to Coast Network. And these segments extend the existing Spring to Spring Trail, encloses the gap between the Berry and Delon Springs. The construction for this 3.5-mile segment is planned for the years that you see here. The first one in fiscal year '28, which is the second to the last year. And then the other two are in this second year. And then we have another bike trail along the St. John's River to Sea Loop from Sewell Street, McDonnell Road, to Carmen Drive Ridge Boulevard. This one is also construction in the second to the last year, a little bit over $9.5 million. And then for Flagler County, this is a project for Graham Swamp Trail from Lehigh Trail to the Graham Swamp Conservation Area. PE for that, that is the design phase that is occurring in the first year of our tentative work program, just shy of $1 million. A couple of other local agency projects, also known as LAP. The first one here is the local agency project with City of Port Orange, also a bike path trail. You see the construction, sorry, the design on that has been programmed for the last year of the tentative. We have a bridge replacement project with the City of South Daytona Beach off of the state highway system. That is a bridge that's off the state highway system. The construction on that, the design on that, excuse me, is in '25. And then we have some other ponds. Inlet Mobility faces 1, 2, 3 projects, improvements along, construction in '26, which is the second year. And then another bike trail project along US-1, construction in fiscal year '28, second to last year. And these are the last of the local agency projects that I'll highlight here in relation to roadways. We have the local agency project with City of Daytona Beach. This is a complete streets project from Bay Street towards Fairview Main Street intersection. We have, that construction is in the first year. And then we have a sidewalk bundle in Port Orange. It's a pedestrian improvement project where the design is in the last year. Traffic operation projects. These are some improvements to traffic signals, as well as installation of traffic cameras. As you can see here, we have construction in the first year for the first two and design initiating in the first year of the last one for the South Daytona Traffic Camera Network with construction two years later. I mentioned truck parking. That is a big priority for our region and significant to help with our supply chain for central Florida. We do have truck parking in the eastbound Volusia County website, excuse me, county site. The right-of-way is funded in fiscal year '27 to '28 with construction in the last year, close to $37 million, $38 million for the eastbound location. And then we're also looking at the westbound location for truck parking. Right-of-way is funded in '28 for $15 million. And this was funded, did come from the National Highway Freight Program in August of '23. So we do try to leverage as much of the funding as we can when we can get it. I mentioned the Moving Florida Forward projects for the Volusia County region. We have the US-1 interchange at I-95. The construction is scheduled to start on that in fall of '27, which is actually fiscal year '28. So overall, 25 priority projects funded to over $315 million from the River to Sea TPO, Flagler County's priority as well. We did want to mention there's always grant opportunities. The department supports those. We have a person that is dedicated as a point of contact in case there's any interest in any type of projects that match up with the grant opportunities. The infrastructure investment and jobs that created various programs that are competitive grants protect is actually a resiliency-type of funding. Megas for larger projects, INFRO includes rail-type programs, and the SS4A is Safe Streets for All, safety programs. There's also the Federal Transit Administration Grants. Here's a couple that have been received in the past. So there is success in pursuing this, and the FDOT will provide a letter of consistency. If interested in those, Alice Giuliani would be the best contact. And here I will just mention, we do have our website from the Work Program Public Hearing that was held in October. That information is still available. You can pull the reports by county. You can actually go to GIS MAP if you're interested in a particular region and hone into that area and see what's going on in the work program. And I invite everybody to review it if there's more information that is needed. And my contact information is listed here where you could follow up with an email to me, and I'll be more than glad to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, we thank you for taking the time to visit with us. I see throughout the slide presentation that the description of Volusia is rather frequent or perhaps more frequent than Flagler. I'd like the residents to know that Flagler has not had a loud voice in the TPO. That's the Transportation Planning Organization, which you work closely with in order to prioritize and gather projects. But that has changed, and Flagler now participates at the executive level for the TPO, and in addition, has recently incorporated all of Flagler County's geography into the TPO, which never existed before. So we are kind of loud and proud about being a part of the TPO's executive group going forward. I would ask you this question because a lot of this obviously goes on in the background, and our residents are not really aware of what's happening all the time. I mean, this is going on, I mean, I'm down to the TPO at least twice a month, and then there are other meetings, and I'll be on my way to Tallahassee early tomorrow morning. So it's an ongoing process. But I'd like the, I'd like to hear from you just a little bit about how you are becoming more proactive. And specifically, let me mention the fact that with commercial development on State Road 100 in particular, we already know that traffic congestion is going to be, you know, a trending issue. So what we're asking is that the DOT also look to study what they see as ways to improve the quality of roadways and therefore the quality of life for our residents, particularly as that State Road 100 corridor begins to grow out. So I think being proactive and looking at the problem before it is a problem could benefit all of us, and we appreciate your efforts. And I would ask city council members if there are any specific questions. I will provide a liaison report as our next agenda calls for it, which would be a condensed version of what is being presented today, but specifically for the projects that are going to affect us here locally. Although, we do understand the regional collaboration that's necessary to make roadways work beyond the boundaries of just the city and the county. So we do understand all of that. So I would just ask questions from our, from the DOT?
For sure. I would ask, are there any opportunities for public to give input or feedback on the projects listed in our five-year work program here?
You can certainly provide feedback through the website that is listed there. We'll take feedback at any point. What happens is we do have a Work Program Public Hearing week, and there's a deadline to be able to accept comments to make it into that Work Program Public Hearing. That date has passed. However, that does not prohibit the department from receiving the feedback from the public. So if you go to the website, as soon as you land out in District 5, you'll see towards the bottom, there is public commenting in a form that could be filled out, and any comment will be received by the department, and we'll review it and provide a response.
Thank you.
And please.
Sorry, I didn't want to, I don't know if Councilwoman Hyder, I don't know.
No comment, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I didn't want to skip over her. Thank you for the presentation and the information. I had a few questions to kind of piggyback off of what the mayor was commenting on. I couldn't help but also notice the very large difference between what Volusia has received from the FDOT versus what Flagler is receiving, particularly based on our growth. So is there anything that we can do as a city, or as a county, rather, I should say, to improve our visibility to the FDOT and the needs that we currently have? Not just with US-1 and where it connects to 95, but we have some main roadways, like Old Kings, that run parallel to 95. And so what they experience is spillover. There's an accident on 95. Obviously, traffic is rerouted to some of our other main roadways. And so, and the city then has to pay for those road improvements and things like that, even though a lot of it does come from 95. So what can we do as a county to really improve and increase the amount of funds that we're getting from the FDOT?
I think what the mayor alluded to, I think the fact that Flagler's now sitting as a participating member to the MPO and the TPO, to River to Sea as a participating member, opens up funding opportunities. They can actually, projects could be brought forward through priority lists. We can discuss those and actually expand the type of funding that is available and not limit to just certain types of funding. It doesn't, it won't constrain, I should say. What it does, it creates more opportunity for projects. The more discussions there are through our executive management also helps with delivering some of those priorities. Really, the focus is to be able to get those priorities translated with the River to Sea TPO so that those projects then are translated to the department as to items that we wanted, that you would want to look to get funded in the future. We do have a team under our planning group, our PLMO, which is our Planning Environmental Management Office, a project development team. They have point of contacts that we can provide too, and I can follow up as well. You're probably familiar with them under various projects, working on some now. Those are the individuals that you want to reach out for some of these critical corridors that you want to look to expand to, that maybe would be worthy, that you want to review for funding in the future.
Okay.
And more specifically, if I may, just because we work together, there is an appropriation request, a rather significant sum in Tallahassee now, which the city manager, I don't know the date, but we're heading up there to push for funding specifically for Old Kings Road, as you had mentioned.
Yeah.
So that's money that's coming from the state as opposed to, you know, a local funding for that project. And specifically to the councilwoman's point, we'd like to focus on slide number six again so that in a future discussion, we can talk about the delta between the monies that were listed summarized there versus the money for Flagler and understand better how that arithmetic works. So that, again, to an excellent point, how do we make ourselves, you know, the recipients of an even larger share as we know our growth will demand in the future?
Thank you, and I just have two more questions. The slide that references the cost increases. Based on what you all have seen, are those, I know you mentioned supply chain. Are those mostly labor-related, materials-related, both? What do we see?
It's a combination of both. But I really, I think you would see you have a much higher cost related to the materials just because of the amount that that takes into the ratio of the projects.
And are you all anticipating that will start to level out in the next year? Or are we anticipating continuous increases?
We're gonna, we still see increases across the state. I will say central Florida is at a benefit. I think we have a lot more contractors working in our region, a lot of work. So that's why District 5 has seen a greater response to our bids. When we talk to our counterparts in other districts, sometimes it's surprising they're still seeing no bids in the current year. And so we feel like we're very lucky here in central Florida. I think we're just very strategically located where they can go north, southeast, and west to kind of, you know, garner whatever materials and labor that they need. We are not anticipating as high of increases, but again, it's so volatile and has been so volatile. We would see cost increases, in particular for steel, as well as ash for concrete, and that would change from month to month. And it's hard to program that out. And it's not just the department estimators, but contractors are also having a hard time. For a little while there, they were really increasing their prices in the unknown because they were getting short-term bid pricing for whatever material they needed. And so they would put that unknown onto their bid. So that's why we were seeing increases at the department as well. That's just some of the feedback that we've received as well from industry.
Thank you. And then my last question, how is it determined the, how funding will be provided to the airport from the FDOT? What do they base that on?
Specifically, I don't know, but I will have to get to the specifics. And we, I can get from our aviation group how that is divvied up.
Yeah, because I see the Flagler, or I think it was the Volusia Airport. I know the Flagler Airport did too, get monies from FDOT. So I'm trying to determine how that is looked at and allocated versus some of our other infrastructure-like roads and things like that. So how that dichotomy is arrived at and what the FDOT specifically looks at when they're, when they're awarding those monies. So I appreciate that follow-up.
I will get you, I will get you the point of contact to get you the right answer.
And thank you again for the information.
And just one, one last point, if I may, anything?
Oh, no.
The, the public may not be aware because they don't, aren't privy, they can be, but probably don't look through the thousands and thousands. but probably don't look through the thousands and thousands of pages of information that we see. But there is a rather important initiative on behalf of the DOT to bring the, to bring green initiatives to large projects. So, I have seen some of the more recent projects, some of which you've pictured here, take into consideration where the animal trails will be and how animals can coexist with these major highway construction projects. It's quite incredible, some of the creativity that's been used in addition to preserving green spaces on some of the other projects. So, you know, my advice to DOT would be to, you know, further promote the fact that that is an important criteria that I'm not familiar with from the past. So, you know, kudos and bravo to you all for doing that.
Appreciate it. I'll share that with the others at the office.
Anyone else? Then we thank you for your presentation.
Great, thank you.
We move forward on the agenda, item F, number two, which...
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, we do need public comment on that item.
I'm sorry, my apologies, we changed, yes ma'am.
Sylvia Puglisi, Palm Coast, since 1991. First of all, I have to appreciate to our so very clever, caring councilwoman, Pontielli, for her very smart question regarding who and how these funds are assigned to the aviation. I was traveling here and this is not very reliable and I think I heard the person from FDOT saying that the assigned funds are 271 millions in the next five years for aviation and only 281 millions for roads. This is totally non-common sense if I heard right. Did I hear right, those figures? If that I heard right, it's ridiculous. This is the reason why we are being overwhelmed by all these schools for worldwide pilots. This country won't be enough to have all these schools for all those white war pilots that come here to learn because it's cheaper, as we were told, Gina Weiss and myself. When we went to an inspection in this airport with a, with a couple of FAA inspectors giving our complaints regarding the nuisance of the touch and goes allowed in this airport, which they started in the year, in the middle of the year 2000 and are getting worse. So, this is a question, this is not common sense. Somebody has to address these issues. How these funds that we request are, first of all, requested for which purposes? And second, second, which are mainly to benefit developers in roads like Seminole Woods, you know, didn't need any, any repaving, was perfect. Oh, was repaid for 2 millions, but they took away from our two islands in Florida Park Drive, the 300,000, because they put it on that fund and it went to Seminole Woods. Was no needed. Even a candidate that is running in Seminole Woods says it was no needed. The people of Seminole Woods didn't need that. Why those, that was repaid? Why? Because now they are putting the cascades there. These are the concerns that we have. And you have our representatives to look in detail into those things. It's obvious for us. That's why we get frustrated and we come here and beg you. So, please, look into those issues. I cannot even emphasize more on the words of Ms. Darlene Shirley of what we are exposed to, these incorrect located 5G towers, the airport contamination of lid and touch and goes, and all these floods. Look at our ordinance 24C12156 and you'll find your answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to comment to me on this agenda item?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast, Florida Park Drive's a residential street, but yet FDOT monitors its traffic count. And I'm somewhat puzzled with that, but I'm glad they're doing it. But I also would like to know, since FDOT is monitoring it, does FDOT give the city any funds to maintain this residential street? Also, how many residential streets in Palm Coast does FDOT monitor? I know of just this one right now, but there might be others. And just curious, you know, yeah. Of all the residential streets, is the city getting any money from FDOT for maintenance? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Mayor, just want to thank you for your efforts in working with DOT and TOP as well as to seeing increase of funding come into the area. I think it would be beneficial to everyone. From a wildlife aspect, I like what you said and I like what they're doing. I know in other parts of the states, they put wildlife over corridor passes, sort of some underground stuff actually too, and there's been real emphasis on that. So, if we can protect the corridor and specifically not just for the animal's sake, but so that people on 95 aren't smashing deer every other day, yeah, I think it's great and I think the city should look forward to that and I think there should be an enhanced cooperation with you guys and them and I look forward to better representation from the county. And personally, I'd like to thank you on behalf of that because I know you're putting in work there, so.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else want to comment on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Candy, I live in the P section. This isn't normally my forte thing, the roads, but that is our infrastructure and we've all been crying that we need our infrastructure to grow as we grow. So, I think the money that we need to try to get is a good thing. But I can say on my street, on Point Pleasant, I get so much cut-through traffic from Royal Palms, then they cut up to Ponce de Leon to get onto Belteri down at that end and it's like a Speedway on my road now. The last, I've lived there nine years and the last two years, it is unbelievable. So, I would like them to do a count in my neighborhood on Point Pleasant and Ponce de Leon to do a count to see how many cars are coming through there. I think that you'll be shocked at the cut-through. People really try to avoid that light there at Belteri and Royal Palms like the plague. It's horrible. We need like a little bit better of a situation there, I think, too. There's a lot of wrecks there as well. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. City manager, just before we finish with this item, can you give us some insight into the DOT-funded roadways versus the city-funded roadways? Just so that there's some clarity.
Excuse me?
Or if staff is better able to answer that?
No, I can, I can at least introduce the approach. So, you heard in the presentation from the DOT representative, State Roads Interstate. So, for direct funding for DOT projects, of course, that's part of the program. Now, I will say that DOT has been an extremely good partner on safety improvements throughout the city that qualify for priority funding. And actually, in the Strategic Action Plan Presentation Update, you're going to hear more about that, where we work cooperatively on those safety improvements.
Okay, not quite the answer I'm looking for. So, DOT focuses on the state and the, and the federal roads, but it's up to us, I think, without the safety component, to fund improvements on our local roadways?
Yes, and I see Fong came to the, who is our primary liaison.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and city council members. On local roads, we do not receive maintenance from DOT. We seek basically for our major collectors or collector roadways and particularly the, one of the residents mentioned that DOT monitor our local roads. That is basically for informational only. They receive those basically traffic volume from us, you know, to publish there on their website. So, that's the only thing. We, major, major roadways corridors, we continue to pursue for funding. As you alluded to, that we make requests to the Florida Legislature for appropriation to Old Kings Road 100 and the extension of Matanzas Woods. So, those are the, the major corridors that we request funding for. Also, is just to let you know that the River to Sea loops, the portion that they receive in terms of funding, you're looking at only several millions a year, five to seven millions a year. So, those type of dollars will not be suffice for any major improvements. And then, I just want to take this opportunity to let you know as well that State Road 100 from Belter to Old Kings Road, there's going to be a resurfacing project by DOT. Part of that resurfacing project, they also going to add additional turn lane as the appropriate intersection, for example, at 100 and Seminole Woods Town Center, they're going to add additional turn lanes. And in addition to that, in the background, we also make requirements to developments that are impacting that intersection to provide additional funding in order to resolve. Typically, the choke points are the intersection, so just to provide that information to you.
So, you'll continue working with DOT to study that particular corridor as it, as it grows and develops?
Yes, sir. And part of that effort was that last year, staff worked with the TPO to remove what was the constraint is that there are protective prioritized list of projects that cannot be amended.
Right.
And then we were successful in removing that constraint. So, from now on, we are able to provide statistical information in order to support what we are requesting.
Very good, okay. It's a, it's a complicated subject, I don't want to belabor it. Mr. DeLorenzo, can you shed some additional clarity?
Yes, sir. Just on the, the comment about Point Pleasant and being used as a cut-through. Last year, you will remember, we received an appropriation from the legislature to do the construction of what's called the Belter Safety Project and that runs from Royal Palms to Whiteview. And as part of that safety project, there is addition of turning lanes on Royal Palms, which will improve capacity at that intersection and should reduce the cut-through.
I appreciate that. Anything else for now? Like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll begin to provide those liaison reports so we can speak more specifically about residents' concerns in their own individual neighborhoods as they're appropriate for the TPO, okay? Thank you all and we especially thank the DOT and hope to see you back again. With that, we'll move next. So, I'm sorry, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment and anything left on the day as here, no? Then, we will move on to presentation number two under E, which is to approve a concession lease agreement with Redefined Food Company LLC for food and beverage concessions at the Southern Recreation Center. You have a presentation?
Yes.
Oh, good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Yeah, go ahead, you know what, read the resolution into the record for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Resolution Concerning the Concession Lease Agreement for the Southern Recreation Center. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the terms and conditions of the concession lease agreement with Redefined Food Company LLC for food and beverage services at the Southern Recreation Center, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. That is the resolution.
Thank you, counselor, and please go ahead and proceed.
Well, good morning, Mayor and City Council, James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. As you said, we're looking for the concession agreement with Redefined Foods at the Southern Rec Center. Today, we do have Jody from Redefined Foods and I think Joe was here, but I think he stepped out. They're in attendance today as well. Just a quick refresher on the Southern Rec Center. So, we do have 10 existing clay tennis courts. We're looking to expand into 12 new pickleball courts. Six of those are covered. We're going to have two multipurpose rooms in our, in our new renovated clubhouse. We have viewing balconies and then we also have a kitchen, serving area, and prep room. And then, a few weeks ago, you did see that four additional clay courts and one stadium court is planned for this area. So, just quickly, the next two slides are going to go over the criteria of the project and what the staff based their scoring on. And then, the next slide, we'll, we'll go over the process for, for the RFP. But real quick, the project criteria, they, the bidders were supposed to provide us with a proposed food and drink menu, innovative programs to attract attendance to the center, and then experience with similar projects and also experience with their project team as well and experiences they've had in the past. Through our process with the RFP, October 23, the city offered, issued the RFP. In, within that RFP, it contained the concession lease agreement. We had 15 vendors download the RFP documentation. Two were responsive and complete and submitted back to the city and those were actually two local companies. One was Redefined Foods and the other was WellPlate. Then, staff independently reviewed and scored bids and then obviously our unanimous selection was Redefined Food Company. And then, real quick, on the concession agreement, we will be at $9 square foot for the areas they will be leasing within the center. This would have increased by 3% annually. The tenant will be responsible for electric, water and sewer, internet, telecom, and gas. And then, we are also looking for a five-year term with an option to, for one-year renewal. Other than that, and that pretty much sums up our presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, questions?
I think you hit the nail on the head. I was going to ask if you could detail the selection process for Redefined Foods and how they were chosen over the other candidates, just for transparency and, you know, just for them to understand.
Yeah, the, the proposed menu was very detailed, offered what we were looking for, healthy, grab-and-go kind of selections, also some of the innovative programs they, they've suggested and they did suggest was good to bring to the center as well, some special events, even QR codes they have out at the court. So, if you're playing pickleball or tennis and you want to order food real quick, it's just kind of QR code up on your phone, order it online and it'll pretty much come out to you or you can come pick it up. So, that's kind of how we determine that.
Awesome. And just to reiterate, there are only two actual submissions that were...
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious, why are they only given a one-year option to renew? Is that what they requested?
This, this one, we, just due to the new center, not really sure how things will progress with the center. So, we thought it would be safe to just keep it with one-year, one-year renewal.
Okay.
I, I, I think your question is a good one. I personally would shrink the, the first part in favor of the second, but, you know, if you're already into it for five years, one year seems, but okay, just awkward, but...
I just would think that after being there for five years and with only a one-year option to renew, it would kind of put the tenant in a position where a feeling of, you know, I've got to make a decision now. I only have one year left on a renewal.
Okay. We can...
So, I, I don't know if they're in agreement with that, but I don't know if...
And we can discuss this with, we can discuss it.
Okay. Okay.
Fair enough. Okay, questions?
No, I'm good.
I, I had the same kind of question, actually. It was kind of awkward for me. I mean, I thought, based on some of the other things we've seen with other concessions, maybe it would be better to do a three-year term with another renewal after that or, or maybe two renewal options. So, I don't know if that is something that Redefined is, maybe they're in the same boat and they, they kind of feel the same way. I don't know if we can kind of work with them on that at all.
We can definitely.
But yeah, I, I, I'm with you. I found that to be a little odd. The other questions I had, I saw in the, in the materials, first, is the, how is the rent determined? Is that market? Because it, it seems a little low, but if it's market, okay.
Correct, yes.
Okay, perfect. And then, why only four hours? I saw that they are planning on being open for four hours.
It'd be minimum of four hours.
Right. But, I mean, how is that determined? What are the hours that they're planning on being open? Because I could see a scenario where it's only like 10 to 2 or 12 to 4 and that's not really conducive, I don't think, to really providing our residents with the best service.
Yes. Our ultimate goal was to stay open as, have the area, kitchen area, open up as long as the facility is open for, for the patrons and the residents. We looked at four hours just to, just kind of as a, as the minimum, four hours. So, yeah, it's minimum four hours to, to be open and to contend, and so, yeah.
Okay, is there a way that we can work with them on some determined hours?
Yep, definitely. Yeah, we're usually, we're looking at the time of, we have discussed this prior to coming to today and we're also looking at also, you know, we have looked at hours that we would, would potentially be, they would be open while we'll be open as well.
Okay.
And if they wanted to extend it... And if they wanted to extend it, there'd be permission through.
And what are the facility hours?
That's fine. If James wants to answer, it's fine.
Yeah, so right now, we're looking at Monday through Friday, eight to nine, eight AM to nine PM. And on the weekends, eight AM to about two PM, with potentially expanding those as we kind of move into the facility and understand what our workload is.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's in the lease, actually. Page four, page four of seventeen of the lease, section H specifically says a minimum of four hours a day. So if that's all they're really bound to by contract, I have an issue with that. So I think that we definitely need to amend that.
Okay.
After speaking with them and what they're willing to do, just to make sure we're providing, like I said, that best service through our rec center.
What about weather permitting and things like that?
Yeah.
If we don't have people using the tennis facility, would we still expect them to be serving?
Well, it is technically, well, we do have the six covered courts for pickleball, so potentially, the center could be, continue to be used. You know, we're looking to have some programs upstairs in the multipurpose rooms as well. And then it is also, you know, anyone from the public can come and have a drink or have some food as well. So potentially, it could be open if maybe the tennis courts are down, or the six pickleball courts are down that aren't covered. But there is some activity in the facility that can be utilized as well.
Yeah, I think they could also downsize staff. I mean, like any other business, they're going to have to make that business judgment, but to only bind them to four hours per day, I think is just, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The other question I had was, this is regarding the lease specifically as well. There's nothing in the lease that states that any contracts that the city enters into for the Southern Rec Center does not make this tenant a third-party beneficiary. I just, I think that just for protection purposes for us, that we should just add a clause like that, City Attorney, that states that anything that the Southern Rec Center enters into does not make the tenant a third-party beneficiary to that contract. Then my last comment was, there's no mention maintenance-wise for HVAC or plumbing. There's other things that are mentioned, but HVAC, I think, could be a pretty expensive thing for us to be bound to fix if it's not explicitly identified in the lease. So after conversation with the tenant, I would assume they would be responsible for that. That's usually how it is in commercial leases, but I think that that should be specifically delineated, just so that the city isn't falling on that cost.
Okay.
So I guess that would also be dependent on the engineering of the HVAC.
Well, it would be. What part of the HVAC, you know?
The HVAC's for the whole building.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be something.
The way, it should be delineated. So whether it falls on the tenant or the Southern Rec Center, it should definitely be delineated.
And while we're workshopping this, just two other points. The tennis, the local tennis group, organization, has been very vocal and very supportive of this. Have you worked with them regarding this decision? Because I'm surprised not to see any of them here today.
We do, we have mentioned it to them.
Okay.
And we have let them know what kind of concession is coming in, and we went through the bid process with them, and we show, and they know who the winner is and everything.
And we had also spoken at a prior meeting about the excitement surrounding USTA sanctioned events, which would raise the bar, and also the number of visitors that would pour through here. Has that been a part of your contract consideration? Because this is not going to be serving a regular day. When these events come forward, you're liable to see a multiple of both visitors and participants.
Yeah, that's, that's in the contract as well.
In what way?
As part.
I don't remember seeing that.
If I understand your question, when it comes to special events, group outings, and things like that, our vendor would be the first right of refusal to cater those.
So that's my question. So what I'm concerned about is, are they, and we'll workshop this, I want to be sure that you vetted them to make sure that they are able to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To manage and provide a service level at those events, which are going to be the lifeblood of this facility for the future.
And we've been in discussion, yeah, we've been in discussion with staffing needs and things like that.
I had no further questions.
All right. Are you looking for some direction from us today?
I feel like I think we've got direction, but also we're looking for.
So you've got each of our questions, and you'll be able to answer those?
Get those.
Or make the modifications that were requested?
I'm sure. I know that no motion's been made yet, but assuming that it's going to be a motion to approve subjects to the.
Right.
Direction given during the meeting.
And it's coming back for a business meeting where we'll look at those, and we'll expect those to be in there. Okay? For good, fair enough?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And now I will open up this item for the public. So are there any members of the public that would like to? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Lauren Ramirez. I'm a resident here, and I saw that Redefined Foods was going to be on the agenda, so I'm excited to be here. And I have had the opportunity to actually order from Redefined Foods over four hundred meals. They were, actually, as you were asking that question, like, all right, I'm here for a reason. So I am the president of PTO at Belter Elementary, and we host dances, you know, every month, every other month. We bring in thousands of dollars for the school. We had a mother-son dance, and we didn't want pizza. We wanted something healthy, but something affordable, and we do know healthy food is more expensive. So from just meeting different people in the community, I'm a small business owner myself, so I was able to meet Redefined Foods. I ate there frequently. And I called and said, hey, you know, would you be able to provide, you know, over four hundred meals? But meals that are meant for children and adults, but healthy, but we do have a budget. And, but I said, I do understand you're a business. I'm a business, so I don't want you losing a penny. So what can you do if you could? And it's four hundred meals, three hundred or so would need to be hot and delivered, or, you know, something like that. And she said, I think we can do this. And we worked months together to plan it. It came out amazing. We had so many compliments. It wasn't pizza. And that's like, you know, pizza's very cheap, very easy to get. I pick up sixty of them every dance, and I was like, oh, my goodness, let's try something different. And the experience we had was great, the feedback from the parents, from the children. And when I heard that potentially this could be a bigger opportunity in our community to have Redefined Foods, I was very excited. So I would love for everyone to really think about, you know, how this could change things, because supporting small businesses is one thing, but also health. So we need to start eating healthier if we're not, and they can provide that service, but it's also affordable in a way. So, yeah, I mean, great experience, great, great owners, and I'd like you to really consider this project.
Thank you. Checks off all the boxes. And the good news is, for the older folks in the room, we're not restricted to sloppy joes and corn.
And ice cream every now and then is good, but they do have desserts that are delicious and have, you know, some type of sweet tooth in it, but it's healthy. But, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter Johnston, Palm Coast. I'm going to make an extremely bold statement. I do not support this unless the barbecue brisket grilled cheese sandwich with tomato soup is on the menu, because that is the best sandwich I have ever had. I love this. I think it's an awesome opportunity to showcase not only the venue that we have, but also the fact that we have a local business going in there in front of our showcase of the Nationals for tennis and all those situations. I would be remiss, though, if I did not say, specific and close attention has to be paid to this contract, because I understand that this was not a city issue, but in the news for the past six years, I have read about Captain's Barbecue and the issues that they have had there. Redefined Food, I don't think you're going to have the same issue at all. I'm in full support of it. I love what they're doing. I love what they've done for the community, and the food's excellent. I'm going to do a shameless plug, so, thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to comment on this issue with this? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Nina Galatto, and I'm the immediate past president of the Professional Women of Flagler County, and I'm currently the president of the Lions Club. And we have often used Redefined Food to support our events, and we were proud to award Jody and Joey Business of the Year for 2023, because, as mentioned previously, they are always willing to help other businesses, other things that are going on in the community, especially being part of these groups. And I also suffer from celiac's disease and other health issues where food is very important, where I'm very picky. I can't just take gluten-free for granted and say this is what it is. And Jody and her son have been very helpful and instrumental with helping me in my health journey of figuring out what foods are good or not good for me, even to the extent where they recommended I do a detox for a few days, which means they don't get money if you're detoxing, because you're not eating. Now, so then, from that point, to really build back my health and see what I can and cannot eat. So they are just, they're more than just a restaurant, they're more than just a local business. They really do care about us, and I just wanted to come today to express my support for them, because to have a place that I can go and know that I won't be sick and comfortably be able to eat and order, and also share in our community. So we were very proud to award them a Business of the Year. I feel they deserve it, and I really look forward to great things from them.
And we thank you for your comment. And I just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the City of Palm Coast proclaimed the Lions Club, which you're president of, and thanked them officially, making the month of November their official month in the company, in the city's record, for all of the wonderful volunteer activities, and there are quite a long list of those. So thank you again to the Lions Club, and I appreciate your comment. Anyone else wanting to make public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathleen Rivera, and I've been living here for five years, and my mother's been here for twenty-three years. She's no longer with me, but I totally want to support the Redefined Food. It's so important. I am a board member of the Professional Women of Flagler County. I'm also, I bring my lead group for lunch there, for the boss ladies, and I hold it there monthly. I'm there probably two to three times a week. I bring clients there even to do one-on-ones there, so I can't say enough. It's great that Redefined Foods, it's to support our local community. They're so supportive, and it's so important that we just support our businesses here, our local businesses, and I'm all for that. So I just wanted to let you know that.
We thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
If I come to the, I'm Nikki White. I'm a citizen and a tennis player, and I'm short. I forget that. I come partly representing the tennis group, because I have been a very active member with them, and I've been watching the growth. And the USTA event will be a big event if we sponsor it and market it properly. My biggest concern has been that there is no available food for those guys who work so hard and play so hard to get, and healthy food, and they can't get anywhere from the tennis center and be back in time. So this, having a restaurant, has been very important to the tennis club as a whole. My biggest concern that goes along, and Redefined, I eat there all the time, so it's okay. It's, everything they said about the food is perfect, and if you haven't gone, I would recommend that you stop by and have some food before they move over here. My biggest concern then becomes parking. As a tennis facility, it is already a trouble, and if we're going to invite many people, and including citizens, just to come to have good food, we're going to have traffic problems there, and I don't think that that's taken into enough consideration. Please do that and let them feed us.
Thank you for your comment. Was there one more? Yes, sir.
Morning. Greg Blosse, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. I think this is a great deal. Jody and Redefined Foods are a member of the Chamber. It's a local family business. This is a really great story, where we're helping, and we've selected through the city's RFP process, a local company, and we're helping them grow their business through the new Southern Rec Center. My uncle plays quite a bit of tennis there, and he's been watching the building of the new facility, and he's very excited about that. And I think the healthy nature of Redefined Foods and the grab-and-go that they offer is really going to play well there and be an added amenity for the residents. So as you heard, everyone's really a fan of Redefined Foods, and the Chamber puts their support behind them as well.
We thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Mayor and people. My name is Jody Saltis, and I am a co-owner of Redefined Food Company. My son is too. So I'd be remiss in not speaking and just telling you a little bit about ourselves. We moved here in nineteen ninety-eight, built our house during the wildfires, so I have seen Palm Coast grow. My kids, all three of them, went to school here, and the amenities were nothing. So they used to play basketball at the old community center. We used to go to the old Holland Park. There was hardly anything there. My kids actually swam, became swimmers, because we had Frida Zamba pool, and that was really all that we had. So they swam through high school, and were on the swim team, and we had to travel to Ormond sometimes to the pool there. I am a member of Frida Zamba. I swim all the time, can't wait for February first, so I can get back in the pool. So we've been here quite a long time. We opened our business, it'll be March first, will be five years in business in City Marketplace. We opened the business because my son has Crohn's disease, and we know food is medicine. So we're looking forward to working with the city, that Southern Rec Center. I've been watching it for a while now. We've been visiting with our hard hats, and it's going to be quite an improvement for the city, so we're really looking forward to working with you guys. Thanks for taking your time.
Well, we've certainly set the bar at the highest level for you, so we wish each other good success, okay?
Thank you.
So thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Real quick, I had a question. Celia Palm Coast, since nineteen ninety-one. Since I moved here, things have been moving around, changing names, like Frida Zamba, the Belter Rocket and Swim Club. And now I'm questioning, and there was a tennis playing behind Belter, behind the fire station. Is this what you call the Southern Sports, whatever? Because people like Mary Kay Hayward here, like me, sometimes we have doubts where it's located. So why don't you try to, when you speak about this in the title, say something about regarding the location of Belter, where it used to be there? Because we just don't know. We think when you say southern, we figure out, some people think it's south of one hundred, and we don't know what it is, really. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Then let me close public comment on this item, and we'll move forward to item number three under section E, which is a presentation, the Strategic Action Plan Evaluation Update. Ms. Johnston, are you going to deliver the presentation? Good, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Lauren Johnston, Assistant City Manager. I am happy to share our budget highlights from fiscal year twenty-three, as well as give you an update on your strategic action plan. So first, we'll start with our annual budget report. And why does the city do an annual budget report? Or, as we like to call it, you know, our three hundred and ten-page budget book that's on display at the library in the Palm Coast Community Center here at City Hall. But this really propels transparency, trust, accountability, education, civic engagement, public access, and inclusivity. And our staff works tirelessly to prepare the documents that are outlined in this report and to give the transparency to our residents. Just some highlights from the budget book itself, and also where the budget book is listed on our city website. It is virtually as well. You've seen many of these figures in your budget presentations that we show you each summer. As you know, Palm Coast only collects twenty-three cents on the dollar of the millage rate. Our expenditures by function, public safety, is the highest investment, and that is a priority by the City Council. And then the calculated monthly residential fees. We did have an increase in our stormwater fees this year. That was adopted back in February. We're underway with the utility rate study, and garbage was also increased last year. Then I wanted to really go through each department and share the highlights. All of this information is also located on our quarterly reports that are on our website. Our finance department is award-winning. They won three awards this past year, one in public procurement, one in budget presentation, and then one in our annual financial report. Then our human resources, they really set the culture for our organization. And this year, through the light team, we have created an employee recognition program called Daymaker. So it's a great way for our staff to get out there and make our citizens' day. And then those comments get back to us. And then those comments get back to us. We compile them, and that will launch us into an Employee of the Month program, and then ultimately, hopefully, announcing an Employee of the Year at next year's State of the City. Our human resources department also compiled our emergency management food plan. They increased efficiencies in our random drug and alcohol screenings. They provided countless citywide trainings. And then I know a program that Ms. Bevan is very proud of. Did you want to highlight the success of this program?
Oh, thank you, Lauren. You're doing a great job, by the way. Also, before I move into the programs of HR, I'd just like to applaud again finance. I believe it's 20 years for the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. I see a nod. So going back to our succession planning is what I really want to dovetail my comments on, is hearing from our employees. So Lauren mentioned the LIGHT team. So that's an internal mentoring program that was established many years ago. We listen to our staff and things that they're passionate about. And one of the things that a previous LIGHT team said is, hey, for new hires, it's really important that they get on the right page at the beginning. And so the LIGHT team said we should do a 360 evaluation for new hires. And what that means is not only the new hire is being evaluated, but the supervisor's direction is also being evaluated. So we know that we're giving the direction that new hire needs. And it really has shown in our results. So first-year retention of new hires, in 2022, it was 77%. In '23, it was 88%. So we're seeing that success within the numbers. And then also the career roadmaps, which is something that took, you know, a lot of energy but a lot of listening to our employees. So you see here, there's 60 auto promotes. Roadmaps are what we call where you know where you can go from day one in the organization and what it takes to get there. And in 2022, 13.7% of our employees were promoted. And in '23, 15.58% were promoted. So we're seeing that growing talent internally and that succession planning working. Thank you, Lauren, for extending the opportunity.
Absolutely. You know, that's an awesome program that also drives efficiency. And then whenever those employees, they stay here, all of that training and that history and that knowledge that we're able to keep within side of them, that only stays within promoting and propelling our future. The next slide is our highlights of public safety. Our Palm Coast Fire Department celebrated 50 years of service. We received state appropriations for a new fire station to serve the residents in Seminole Woods. They served over 10,000 kids during Fire Safety Month, responded to disasters during Hurricanes Ian and Nicole, and they also were deployed to fire protection to the recovery of Fort Myers Beach. They had 14,310 total calls for service. Our partners at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, Ford Diamond Accredited Agency, crime rate is down to 54%, a historical low in the last 25 years for our community. And they had a total calls for service of 117,931, and total crashes were 3,152. Our also award-winning Public Works Department created various in-house road maintenance and projects, which saved $61,000 in 2023. And the asset management for fleet vehicles resulted in recouping over $894,000, and that's the city auction. So as a vehicle ends its life for us, we put it out to auction and surplus, and that's that collected figure. They had 95 traffic signal work orders, 122 road sign repairs, 264 potholes were reprieved, and 286 hazardous trees. And that's amazing talent from our public safety. As mentioned previously by Ms. Bevan, we secured funding and grants through FDOT in the widening of Old Kings Road Phase Two, an additional $4.5 million in traffic safety improvements, as Mr. DiLorenzo mentioned, for Belter Parkway. And I'd be remiss if I, the slide shows the Southern Rec Center. We also received DOT funding for the Lehigh Trailhead there and making improvements for parking and all of that. We also received funding through FIND, Florida Inland Navigation District, for Waterfront Park and the waterway cleanup event. The city collected $54.5 million in state appropriations last year. And in other grants, we received for the TDC grant for the Southern Recreation Center and St. John's River Water Management Grant for the London Waterway Extension Project. We love working with our community partners and having county-wide collaboration. We've had several achievements this year, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Hopefully, James can go out there and win an award on this. I think it's the first ever that, you know, these consultants are seeing a county-wide effort between a county and a municipality on such an important topic. Ms. Bevan hosts the Countywide Capital Improvement Project Summit, where all of the managers and county administrator and their staff, we get together and we go over projects, and we find ways to either cut costs or ways that we can work together, timing and communication. It's a great way to have that collaborative effort. Also, our healthcare roundtable that was just recently hosted with not only our education partners, but also our medical providers. So we had Advent there and UF Health and Flagler Cares, and we were actually able to drill down what are the problems and challenges in our community, and then how can we together work together to fix it? And it's a great way to celebrate our community when we all come together for the United Flagler Fourth or Veterans Day and more. Next is our community infrastructure. Our Customer Service Division in Utility received over 123,000 calls. There was an increase of 62% in Palm Coast Connect cases. And also, our utility bill received a new look this past year. Also, our PEP team, we worked internally to identify a problem with utility PEP calls. There's all kinds of calls, all different times, and it really drives a lot of overtime, staff burnout, and we're trying to get to the root of the problem. So we created a team, and that team directly made an improvement, which is going to drive efficiencies and staff time for those PEP-related calls. We're actively promoting water conservation. And then our major capital improvements would be our reclaimed water main extension for the sports complex, completion of Belter, East Hampton Turn Lane, streetlight design and completion for Sesame Boulevard in East Hampton, and continuing our milling and resurfacing program. Last year, we were able to pave five major arterial roadways, Sesame Boulevard, Seminole Boulevard, Metansus Woods, East Hampton, and Belter. Economic vitality in 2023. Advent Health Palm Coast Parkway opened up. We're anticipating the construction of BJ's, which is going to be on State Route 100 with five major out parcels, including the likes of Longhorn Steakhouse, Miller's Ale House, and more. We have relaunched the SBDC and signed the contract with them. And it's really important that our residents, you know, be local and buy local because that stimulates our half-cent sales tax, which funds our capital improvement program. Our recreation department is very, very busy. They are looking forward to many of the upcoming events that not only we as staff enjoy, but also we know the residents enjoy our events. And one thing that we're looking forward to this year is also the city's 25th birthday celebration. So we are looking at highlighting a few things throughout the year to celebrate. Our communications department saw an increase in social followers by 8%. They did over 1,000 social posts, 132 newsletters, 293 news releases. And what's really special about our communications department is they are always willing to provide service and dig in wherever they're needed. Their emergency communications efforts are overwhelmingly positive. They get out there and make sure that our residents know what's happening. And not only that, but they work together with the Flagler County Crisis Communications Team, and they meet on how we can be better prepared. And they go through exercises so that we are prepared for a tornado or hurricane. And, you know, they were recently involved in the active shooter exercise at the hospital before it reopened, so an amazing department. We are excited for 2024 with the opening of the Southern Recreation Center, should be early February. Phase Two of Waterfront Park enhancement, improvements to the James F. Hollins Park splash pad, major upgrades to city infrastructure and design and construction of Fire Station 22 and 26. We are also underway with the city's comprehensive plan, and we have several upcoming public hearings and community partner workshops. We will be in front of the PLDRB and City Council in March, and in May is the joint workshop again. And then in July is whenever you will start to see, from all the data collection and all the analysis, you'll start to see the goals, objectives, and policy revisions to our comp plan for 2050. So you should start to see that late summer. Next, we're going to move into a Strategic Action Plan update. This is sort of a timeline here. We're here today to give you an update on your priorities. February 26 to March 8 is a tentative schedule for your council one-on-ones. And then we'll bring all of that information back to you at a workshop on March 26. And then May 20, or I'm sorry, April 23 is whenever we make sure we heard you correctly, and May 7 is adoption of those priorities. We are working with Dr. Saviac to help us with the Strategic Action Plan process, so we have a meeting with him later this week, and then he'll start getting involved in the process. Are there any questions before I dive right into your priorities?
If you would, try to help me better understand. So the review and updating of the comprehensive plan is an ongoing process over the better part of the next year. How does that, how does that connect with our Strategic Action Plan project, with that timeline? In other words, how do we keep up with that?
So you can kind of work in it simultaneously. So you're, if I go back to this slide, you'll get a workshop in March, and that's right around the same workshop time for your first SAP evaluation. So you'll be able to start hearing what the public is saying and laying in anything that's from the comp plan into your strategic action plan.
In advance of our one-on-ones?
Um...
Because it doesn't, it doesn't help me to have it after.
Sure. We can look at the timeline more closely, just to make sure that you're seeing and hearing from the residents, and you can put that action into...
Hearing them and then putting their thoughts into our strategic action plan would be the goal, I think.
Sure. We'll work on that timeline. My only hesitation is we try and make sure that the priorities are adopted, and we have enough time to program any dollars for the next budget cycle. And if we squeeze the timeline, then we might not make, you know, a budgeted priority. Because if a priority isn't budgeted, then oftentimes it has a hard time...
But certainly not at the expense of ignoring the comments of the public for the comp plan, right?
Right.
We agree. Okay. Anyone else? Are there questions at this moment?
I can hold my questions, because I think they're related.
All right. So jumping into the first priority is Town Center should promote a home for arts and culture, including opportunities for performance display and creative expression. We're actively working with the Flagler County Cultural Council and the stakeholders of United We Art. And through the Flagler County Cultural Council, we're hoping to work out an agreement with them that they'll be able to help us with the city's cultural art grants, and that maybe it's an opportunity to provide more benefit to those groups, because that's in their mission to host those events and programs and stuff. So it's something that we're working through in the background. The next priority is the Palm Coast for itself as a city on the rise to include becoming a regional model for medical training and careers. Council took action to adopt the contract for the targeted industry feasibility study, so Mr. DiLorenzo is actively working through that. We did host meetings with the National Healthcare Real Estate Development Company, and as I mentioned previously, we facilitated the first healthcare roundtable with our education and medical partners. So our projected outcomes is we are anticipating the results from the industry, targeted industry feasibility study. The next priority is develop economic opportunity tools and communication strategies to support and sustain small businesses. This is a new priority for fiscal year '24. As I mentioned previously, we re-engaged SBDC. We also provided city council a presentation this fall with economic development and our goals and timeline for what we achieved last fiscal year and where we're headed this fiscal year. We're continually working with development for the Town Center Core, and we're working with community development to analyze processes and reevaluate development review procedures. Our next priority is Palm Coast Future Expansion is Guided by Master Planning for Smart Managed Growth. This is the priority that revolves around the comprehensive plan, and as previously discussed, we'll have a series of workshops in May, in March, May, and July. Conduct an analysis of new and untapped revenue sources to lessen the reliance on residential property taxes and relieve the burden on residential homeowners. City staff presented to city council during the budget process on this item, and city council took no further action. Millage rate should be revenue-neutral for taxpayers. We meet the city manager and departments to deliver presentations to council on the term guidance, property tax, and millage rate. The next priority is staff should conduct an analysis of commercial solid waste hauling, and this is one of the items on your agenda today that city staff is seeking a little bit more direction. We'll move into our...
Do you want to do that now, or...
They have a whole separate presentation.
Okay.
We'll move into our next pillar, which is Safe and Reliable Services. Our first priority is the Maintenance and Operations Facility is a top priority project and commence initial improvements based on the Capital Improvement Plan. We are working on a timeline to bring some action to city council shortly, but we are targeting, you know, some site work in this fiscal year. The next priority is identify local recreation demands to balance the need of regional activity centers. City council adopted the Parks Master Plan on December 5, and city staff will work towards executing the master plan. City staff will also research grants for capital projects. The next priority is the community center parking pressures and evaluating the repurpose of Fire Station 22. This is ongoing. We are in the design for Fire Station 22, so we're trying to work through that, but knowing this is also a priority. Evaluate hiring a dedicated grant writer or contracted consultant for the city to identify and secure the multitude of grants from federal and state agencies. This is a new priority for fiscal year '24. City staff will include grant research and application in consultant projects. A new FTE was not budgeted in fiscal year '24. Continue to focus on residential safety. Conduct a comprehensive approach to neighborhood safety. This is also an action item on your agenda today, and Carl will be presenting that later this after, or this morning. It's still morning.
Catch.
Our next pillar is civic engagement, and the priority here being encourage residents to learn more about their community and our history. Our projected outcomes include the partnership with the Palm Coast Historical Society and their speaker series, as well as working with them on the Founder's Day event, which I personally went to this year, and it was a wonderful event with the food trucks and all the different vendors and clubs. So I thought it was a great partnership with them, and we... clubs. So I thought it was a great partnership with them. And we also work with them on putting information in our monthly senior newsletter, our e-news, and activity guide. Our next priority is create an opportunity for residents to participate in town hall, town hall style meetings and evaluate options for in-person and virtual formats. Ms. Kershaw has reached out to all of you and we are actively scheduling those this year. Sustainable environment infrastructure is our next pillar with our priority being collaborate with FPL and other community partners to provide electric vehicles, fast charging stations across multiple locations in the city. And this was not only a light team project for fiscal year 23, but also Ms. Rogers presented to City Council various different options. And our last priority is develop a plan for the maintenance of the saltwater canals. City Council received a presentation on the findings of the assessment. Upon conclusion, we did not, City Council did not provide funding for the next phase to include design and permitting. We are, you know, we actively work with FIND and other potential grant opportunities to find funding sources. But that is where we are with that priority. And I have a conclusion slide, which we have seven priorities in Strong and Resilient Economy, five in Safe and Reliable Services, two in civic engagement, and two in Sustainable Environment Infrastructure, and some budgeted funds associated.
So there are 16 priorities. And when we voted on the SAP, whenever that was, less than a year ago, were there 17 or are there new ones?
Nope.
These are the same 17?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So when you adopt your priorities, then we go and make sure that they're included in the budget process. And then those priorities that have budgeted related costs in October, then we start working on the RFPs and anything that we need to do associated to, to accomplish those priorities.
So for example, the solid waste study to find out if there's a additional revenue source for the city there, that was part of our last SAP discussion?
Mm-hmm. And then it was budgeted in October 10-1 and we're seeking direction to move forward with a scope.
Who would like to make comment and/or start to suggest direction? If I may, I'm not clear on the direction you're looking for if we haven't had our one-on-ones yet.
No, this is just an update on where we are as part of our annual process.
Okay.
I think we'll be giving direction when we have our individual meetings.
Comments for today?
No comments for the present.
So I want to start, I have, sorry, I have quite a few comments and questions, but I do want to start with on a positive note. I think the employee recognition program is fantastic. I know Denise and I had spoken about that and just really highlighting, rather than just providing lip service broadly speaking, highlighting certain employees within the organization from their peers. So I really think that that's an awesome thing that we've done. And I appreciate staff really doing that. Also want to recognize our fire department and our sheriff's office. Our fire department is really an extension of our community. I mean, they do so much more for our community than just provide fire service. And I'm very grateful. I know our community is very grateful. And as our population has grown, I know our fire department and our sheriff's office have really stepped up. I probably speak to Commander Reynolds and other commanders three, four times a week at least on resident concerns. And I'm just very appreciative of the continuing service and attentiveness they give to us with some of the challenges. I know we've probably all seen some increases in car accidents, quality of calls have gotten more severe, and they've just continued to step to the plate. And I'm just very appreciative for both of our public safety arms for that. Public works. I know I can call about a pothole or email our city manager about a pothole and within days I see work being done. So I'm super appreciative of that as well. I know our residents are appreciative of that. And I, so I just want to recognize, I see it. I know our residents see it. And even though it may not be communicated to you, it is very much appreciated. With regards to some of the priorities, I did have some questions. My first question was, I saw at the beginning of the presentation, pardon me, an increase to our residents of, I think, $8.62 in, I think it was monthly services that they're seeing on some city bills. How does that compare to the rate of inflation that we've seen this year?
So, and Helena can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the services for garbage was on the CPI and then also the other utility providers. Utility, since a new rate increase hadn't, hadn't gone into an effect. And then storm water was on the new rate from this year. So if they're not on the CPI, it's because a new rate went into effect. But all of our rates are future into a CPI.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that. Emergency communications, fantastic. I think our residents have noticed a big difference in the last year or two on the responsiveness, the updates. I know Lauren, you've worked really hard in conjunction with our sheriff's office and our emergency operations center. So kudos to you all as well. We, you know, our communications department is super positive and I know you all deal with a lot. So to stay positive, to stay out in the community and keep doing what you're doing every day, really, really appreciate the work that goes into that. Sorry, I know I have a lot, but this is really important because I think this is what a lot of our year revolves around. So I'm going to ask some questions. First, at the slide that we're looking at right now, can we, and it doesn't have to be right now, but I would like to know an update of for each priority, what we've spent versus what we've budgeted, just so that we know scale-wise what we have left kind of in the coffers to continue or what we're going to roll over as we have our meetings going into February and March, what we have to roll over budget-wise for
I took that note, Ms. Pontieri. I'll get that information to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. With regards to the city on the rise, becoming a regional model for medical training, I remember the presentation that we were given regarding the research, I think it was a feasibility study. What is the actual next step there and when is that deliverable expected?
I'm gonna phone a friend. Jason?
He was already walking up. He anticipated that phone a friend.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. We have our kickoff meeting today for the targeted industry feasibility study. It's this afternoon with Abel and the consultant that was selected. And that is an approximate nine month, nine month program.
So when will we be updated again? Do you all know that yet or are you waiting until after kickoff?
No, I think after this kickoff meeting, then we'll have a schedule after that. And then we'll understand when they're going to come back to City Council and give a presentation. But that is part of the scope is that they will provide a presentation to City Council.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you. The, the, the business fast-tracking process to cut red tape, minimize delays in opening, make more financially feasible. Is there an actual, because I see the achievements and anticipated results, but they're very broad. Do we have any actual lists of things we've done that small business owners can see and feel the difference with regards to how they're able to open their businesses sooner?
We are, we've engaged our technology consultant, Perconti Systems, to build a intake, electronic intake for business tax receipts. And so that process is underway right now. I don't have a timeline for when that'll be completed, but right now, when, if you come in, you can fill out an online, a fillable form basically, and email it to us. And this will actually make it a live form that will go directly into our workflow. It'll get separated up for the different reviewers because depending on what you're doing, you need a zoning review or a building review. So that will, just like our building permit and planning processes, that will put that all into motion where we'll have simultaneous review instead of right now where it's kind of paper, paper-based and then non-simultaneous where it has to go from a department to department.
Okay.
And one more thing, we also align the organization and we moved Business Tax Division that was under Financial Services to under Community Development. So it's kind of like a one-stop shop. The, you know, Jason mentioned the zoning reviews and, you know, in the organization, that's the same group of people that division will be able to work seamlessly.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. With regards to Fire Station 22, do we have a timeline on that as well?
That's on your agenda this morning.
Today. Okay, thank you. The full-time position for the grant, the grant writer, I don't recall seeing that. I mean, I know we did a little back and we had some cuts in the budget, but I don't recall ever seeing that come before us presented with what a grant writer would cost us. I see just in today's workshop, we've talked about grants numerous times. So I'm a little perplexed as to how we have not shown a very clear need for this position, yet I don't recall seeing it come before us specifically. And I understand this says that, and I've seen it in our RFPs where consultants are supposed to explore grant opportunities. I haven't seen a single consultant bring forth a grant yet. So I, I'm just not seeing this priority really be either explored with us hand-in-hand or perhaps things have gone on in the background that I'm just not aware of. And I'm sorry, questions about that specifically?
Thank you, council member. So let me answer that with two avenues. The first avenue is that the grant coordinator would serve the whole organization. So we would have to evaluate, you know, that need versus how we allocate the funds. As you may recall, we made significant cuts last year on freezing positions, adding positions that weren't mission critical. The second path is that earlier in Lauren's presentation, you saw the storm water improvements in the northern part of the city in the Metansus Woods area. That has numerous grants associated with that project. I think it's Water Management District, Florida Fish and Wildlife. So we are activating that priority through independent capital improvement projects that make sense for the qualified grants that are available.
Okay. Thank you for that, but I don't feel like the question was really answered. So as far as us actually seeing what a grant writer would cost, have we looked at that? Have we explored what kind of market salary is? Because to me, I mean, a grant writer pays for itself, right? In the long run, that's the theory. Is that you're not going to, you're not going to hire a grant writer that's not going to make money. So I guess what I would like to see is, and this can be during the independent meetings, that's fine, but I would just like to flesh this out more because I, I feel like this has been overlooked and it's so vitally important for a city of our size at this point. And I don't know that city staff has overlooked it. I just don't know because I feel like I haven't really been communicated to. So, and I don't know if my colleagues have because we can't talk about it obviously outside of this room. So just more information as we have our meetings would be really appreciated because I don't want to let this one go by the wayside. I think it's vital. So I'll move on from that, but I think it's just, if we could make sure we put that on our list of things to discuss, I'd appreciate it. And then the last question I had was for the canals. It's my understanding that the last time Taylor Engineering was here, we had, we had asked some questions from council with regards to, I think, spot dredging versus, because I think from the presentation from Taylor, it was very clear that the entire system didn't need to be dredged. There were a lot of areas that were perfectly fine. They were exactly how ITT designed them to be. So I thought we were going to have a follow-up from Taylor Engineering on kind of what the cost would be for the spot dredging that needed to occur and whether or not it would damage seawalls, what the other kind of implications of that might be. So to see now that we've just decided that we're not going to move on to the next step, I don't understand how we got there either.
And Carl can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we, we have to, in order to do that, we have to have a design and we have to go through the permitting process for all of the canals. That wasn't, that hasn't been accomplished yet. So before we can do any type of dredging, we have to go get those permits.
Right. No, I understand that. I, I understand that. I'm definitely on the same page with you there. But I, I thought, and I'll go, I can go back and watch the meetings. And maybe they're in the meeting minutes, but I thought the direction that we as council had given to staff and Taylor, and this obviously I'm open to input from my colleagues, was that we were curious as to what spot dredging would cost, what that would look like. And then we would be able to take that next step with regards to permitting.
So my recollection is, so we did discuss many of those things. I'm not sure we actually provided direction, what to do next. I think what I'm hearing is, in order to do anything next, we have to find out what the permitting required would be before we can even decide whether or not spot dredging or what the liabilities associated with structures would be, and on and on. You're looking for direction on, you're asking us what the next step should be, is that correct? But you're telling us that the permitting would be required for any next step.
Correct. I'm not sure if staff received any type of proposal from Taylor Engineering that further elaborates that, but.
All right. So I'm with you. In other words, it's, we need to, well, I guess in a workshop, we can discuss it as a group or individually. So I'm not clear on where we're going either at this moment.
Yeah, it is a little unclear. So if, if that needs to just be added to our, to the list of kind of maybe things that are addressed with council members during individual meetings, I think that would be helpful because I feel like we might have skipped a step here. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
And I just want to add my support to that. Whatever the next step is, we need to begin looking at it and we need to take that next step.
Well, we have, we have to define what it is. I think that's what staff would want to know.
So I think that would be the direction from council is to divine the next step so we can move forward on this.
Yeah. So I, I appreciate the time and all the efforts that have gone into furthering these. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, when, anything right now, Kaz McLufus? And I would just ask that, so a lot of this obviously will be rehashed again as you have your individual meetings. So this is a summary today to help you get started for that.
Yep. No, I won't belabor this. I think that receiving the community feedback, I think we're going to have some one-on-one discussions that are going to produce some additional issues, especially with initiatives that the community has brought up. But I think going forward, when we have our individual meetings, once we wrap back up, then we can talk about the budgetary or resource constraints that are going to put pressure on actually accomplishing these goals. But I think once we have those budgetary constraints, which goes back to Counselwoman Pontieri's request to see how much money we have left in funding moving forward, I think that'll allow us to better plan on how to execute the remaining steps of, of each initiative. So I'm good.
All right. So I'll, I'll show my hand just a little bit in terms of my take on this summary. So just earlier today in today's meeting, we have all, I think, have consensus and agreed that we have a significant priority ahead of us to solve with the public comments and folks that are suffering right now. That's no question, that's a priority. I'm struggling with the fact that we have 17 priorities here. And I'm concerned on both City Council and staff's ability to focus all the attention that's needed to successfully move these pillars or, or, how do you refer to them, pillars?
Pillars.
Pillars forward. That's a lot of pillars. I'm just worried that it is so broad and there are so many things that will we potentially fail because we have not dedicated sufficient resources to the few in favor of appeasing the many. What I mean by that is, I'm looking for success on these pillars. I'm not looking for these pillars to reside in this SAP forever. I'm looking for metrics. I think you alluded to that. How are we doing? How did we end up? What did we spend against them? And as hard as it is, if we can't apply a metric to a pillar in the SAP, then maybe it should not be a pillar. Because if we can't measure our success or failure, what's the point? It becomes more of a PR. And I don't think we need to sit up here and PR these things. We need to know that we can get to finish lines. I don't mean to sound harsh on that, but I would be looking to reel in the extravagant number of pillars that we have here to be able to show the residents that we will be successful in accomplishing goals that are set according to each of, or attached to each of these pillars. That's just me. So I think with that, if there were no other questions for now, we look forward to our individual planning sessions and we look forward to having a facilitator this year so we can move quickly through the process with who I think is an expert in the area.
Thank you. Thank you.
We move to item number...
Mayor, a public comment on that item?
Public comment, yes. So are there, yes ma'am?
When we all bought, Celia Buglisi Pampcos, when we all bought here, we always had on the, off the Beltar area, the Beltar and Rocket Club swimming pool facilitated by AT&amp;T. Also, we had the freedom samba. This is facilitated for the use of those residents in the area of Pampcos that do not have the luxury of having a pool at home. And they use it for their kids, especially we have this long hot summers and it's been all this going on with the Beltar Swim Club pool. I don't know if the city have ever materialized to collaborate with funds like the county does with the school, because unfortunately, that pool is in the school district. And I don't know yet why, in all these years since we incorporated, we never came up with a solution with this, the schools and the county that somebody has to take over that pool to do a proper managing of the pool. Because many of the paying members, and I am not a member of that pool, but my daughter being a triathlon, she has gone there when visiting in the past and practicing that pool, paying the visitor, right? And these people pay a membership and anyway, every single year is threatening to them that they're going to close down the pool. Our people need some aquatic center, and especially the membership they pay is not cheap. Where to take their kids when they don't have pools in these long summers? And I understand also that our pools, though we have a great recreation department and they do whatever they can, I guess, they only have the pool open a few hours and it's not open on Sundays, something like that. I don't see it on any of those programs, and I completed one little paper when we were at the community center regarding that pool. They have membership. These pools need to keep open. You mayor said when another, we were going to come up with an aquatic center. I saw here a presentation and the people that we pay a fortune for the consultants said, oh, there is no pool in our, in our presentation because they're too expensive and, and we need, we need our aquatic pools. And if it's not going to be Mr. Alphin's wonderful aquatic center because it said it's too expensive, let's take care of the two pools we have for our people now and let's don't think grandiosity and let's preserve what they have now. These people need for their kids, the elderly that go to that Beltar Rocket Club. And if the school wants to shut it down, let's get to a table and talk with the school and say, okay, well, give us over the pool and we manage it. Please, let's do that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this strategic action plan summary agenda now? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Any further discussion?
None.
Okay, then we'll move forward to item number F5. Yes. This would be the strategic action plan priority, so it's a follow-up regarding an analysis of commercial solid waste...
Number four.
Four?
Number four.
I'm sorry, approving a contract with Kimley Horn for a residential speed limit posting study, yes.
Good for you, sped right past it. I know, I was waiting for that, that was good, thank you.
Cody?
Yes, good morning, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. Good morning, council, Mayor Alphin, City Manager Bevan. I am pleased to present to council for approval a contract to perform residential speed limit posting study as well as a study for Florida Park Drive. So as part of city council's strategic action plan for fiscal year '24, there are funds budgeted of $150,000 related to the residential speed limit posting study. City staff began the request for qualification process on September 27, 2023 that met the requirements of the city's procurement policy as well as the Florida statutes pertaining to Consultant Competitive Negotiations Act. After extending the RFQ due date, the city was able to receive three proposals that were evaluated by the evaluation team, who ranked Kimley Horn as the most qualified firm who have completed recent speed limit posting studies in Florida, and they also included a copy of a report as part of their RFQ. City staff met with Kimley Horn and negotiated a scope and fee that split the two parts, into two parts to address the items requested by city council, a residential speed limit posting study and a Florida Park Drive study. We will get into more details on the scope of these two parts in upcoming slides. So currently, according to Controlling Florida statute, all city-owned residential roads are posted at a speed limit of 30 miles per hour. In order to lower the speed limit, an investigation needs to be completed. Kimley Horn's approach to speed limit posting studies is based on the methodology established by the Florida Department of Transportation's Speed Zoning for Highway, Roads and Streets Manual, August 2018, for area-wide blanket speed restrictions. This manual sets forth the criteria to establish specific speed zones and provides the traffic engineering procedures that must be followed to alter an area-wide speed limit upward or downward from the 30 mile per hour statutory speed limit. The study will be completed in several steps. A kickoff meeting will be held with city staff to confirm project objectives and to finalize the speed and traffic count locations. Then data collection will occur. The initial scope includes 50 locations with allowances for two sets of additional 25 sample points if data is inconclusive or analysis determines additional samples are necessary. Upon completion of the data collection, Kimley Horn will then perform a speed limit analysis for the identified streets to determine if the criteria outlined in Section 316.189 Florida statutes support creating an area-wide speed limit. Kimley Horn will analyze common descriptive statistical measures utilized in determining prevailing speeds. Kimley Horn will develop a report documenting all data collection efforts, data analysis, conclusions, and recommendations described in the preceding tasks and make a presentation to council. So for many years, city council has directed staff to perform a multitude of actions on Florida Park Drive. Many actions have been completed. The speed limit signage updates that included adding radar-enforced plaques at each end were installed, implementing a truck restriction ordinance with installation of associated signage that included coordination and enforcement with Flagler Sheriff's Office. We staff conducted a noise, or had a noise impact analysis conducted per Federal Highway Administration traffic noise model utilizing actual roadway geometry, and the conclusion was that sound levels did not exceed standards and also performed an air study, which results indicating that no sensor saw any significant events exceeding the U.S. EPA National Ambient Air Quality Standards. We also implemented a landscape buffer program along the right-of-way for homeowners. A design for landscape medians was completed and the project was bid out on July 12, 2022. City staff presented council with the bid received to construct the two proposed medians at a cost of almost $400,000. Due to the cost exceeding the budgeted funding, council concurred not to move forward with the project at that time. As part of the following budget approved by council included shifting all funding for this project to street resurfacing due to the lack of revenue for the street rehabilitation program. The only remaining item to complete is to modify the roadway striping when the street is resurfaced. Due to the limited funding for the street's pavement management program, this roadway is not on the city's five-year plan. There are two items in the scope of work for the Florida Park Drive study to address concerns raised by citizens and requests by city council. The first item is to have Kimley Horn evaluate the speed differential along Florida Park Drive as a result of the installation of provided landscape traffic medians that the city had designed. Projected speed data will be compared to projected speed with the traffic median designs along Florida Park Drive and the forecasted speed along Florida Park Drive in that traffic island calming locations will be estimated by performing travel time runs at up to two similar locations. Kimley Horn will also evaluate the Florida Park Drive median design for probable traffic diversion to other roadways. They will also review alternate routes to Florida Park Drive and compare travel times. In addition, Kimley Horn will collect intersection traffic counts at up to two intersections to review the most recent five years of crash data along Florida Park Drive and perform a crash prediction analysis in accordance with Highway Safety Manual methodology. Kimley Horn will review HSM for countermeasures and crash reduction factors appropriate to the proposed medians. The analysis will summarize existing total crashes, projected crashes with its calming in place. The second item is to add stop signs along Florida Park Drive. The city must obey all instruction of the manual uniform traffic control devices, which states that all way stop signs or multi-way stop signs will, shall be placed only where an intersection meets a defined warrant for installation of an all-way intersection. Kimley Horn will perform an all-way stop sign warrant at two intersections along Florida Park Drive. All-way stop sign warrants will be performed in accordance with MUTCD Chapter 2B. Kimley Horn will collect intersection traffic counts at two intersections, perform a field visit to survey the study intersection, intersections and document traffic conditions and other roadway and traffic safety characteristics. Kimley Horn will develop a report documenting all efforts, data analysis, conclusions, and make a presentation to council. So the project's schedule intends to have all tasks completed by the end of April with a presentation to council on May 14, 2024. This item is to seek council approval to approve the fee proposal and enter into a contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. to perform a residential speed limit posting study for a fee of $60,248.05 and approve a fee proposal with Kimley Horn to perform a Florida Park Drive study for a fee of $33,745.10. Any questions from council?
I guess, just a first question because that's probably going to come up. We have done a study on Florida Park Drive in the past, so can you just clarify?
We've done several studies. We did a noise study, we've done air quality study. We did some speed count studies. There was a traffic study that was not approved by council in the past. We've done an inter, I want to say, it was two traffic engineers ago, they had performed an in-house traffic study, but we, a formal study of this nature has not been performed yet.
So of this nature, so this one's different?
We have, we've never done a stop sign signal warrant study on Florida Park Drive, and we never did a study evaluating what the median's impact role would be on the speed or traffic flow.
So this was kind of a new request from the residents about using stop signs? That's what this study is about?
Well, it's looking at what the median's impact will have on Florida Park Drive in terms of speed or diversion of traffic and any crash, you know, anything that may, safety or other items that may be pertaining to installing two medians. And then they'll be analyzing the two most heavily utilized intersections and placing stop signs at those locations and doing a warrant study to see if they meet a requirement to actually be able to install a stop sign.
All right, so, so help me with this. So we're updating what we've done before so that it's current so we can make decisions that are relevant for today?
No. Well, we've never done, we've never done a stop sign warrant study, so this is brand new. The medians were just based on known data from other cities and counties that when you install medians in the roadway and divert traffic slightly or narrow the lanes, it's going to slow traffic. So we're basing on historical knowledge of past projects. This is going to do a specific analysis for Florida Park itself on the two specifically designed medians, so it'll give us a more project-specific analysis.
Anybody else, can anybody else help me with this? I'm struggling with a little bit.
Yeah, Mayor, I understand what you're asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, basically what, previously we had not done a stop sign study. And previously, when you all presented the costs of the medians to city council, it was not based on the specific need of Florida Park Drive, it was based on what medians have done in other cities, correct?
Correct.
So we have never looked at specifically how these medians can help Florida Park Drive now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know if that helps, Mayor, but...
Even though we used traffic counts from Florida Park Drive in the prior studies, that's where I'm...
Yeah, those don't play a role. This is what impact will a traffic, installing a traffic calming measure on Florida Park Drive actually have on speed or traffic accounts?
I apologize. I feel like we're starting over and we have a reference library that we could draw from, but, you know, I'm not the engineer, I can't, I'm just struggling with it, so...
I think that could be said, Mayor, for the fact that we have other speed studies as well, yet we're paying for one specifically because it's required now to possibly reduce speed limits. So I think that we're kind of more hyper-focused, I think is probably the best term for this, rather than using data that we've collected because we just collected. We're specifically collecting data for this very focused, for these very focused reasons. That's the way that I'm looking at it. And I'm also looking at the fact that we're probably going to pay less for an analysis of Florida Park Drive as, from this contractor versus, at this time, because we're hiring them to also do the speed study rather than doing it in piecemeal.
Exactly, I guess, I guess my issue is, and, you know, maybe shame on, on me or us that we're spending another hundred grand on top of what we spent in the past. Maybe it's necessary, but I hate to boil it down to its common denominator, but I feel like maybe we have to so that we get it right, but I feel uncomfortable.
I raised this flag months ago when, when we were initially talking about, when this became a priority for me specifically focused on Cimarron and then Florida Park Drive, I specifically said, why do we even need to do a speed study? We know there are issues, however, because statute dictates that we should, we decided as a group to do it to be prudent.
Fair enough, I understood. So I guess the guarantee I'm looking for is that should this move forward, that there is no excuse for it not to solve or answer the questions that the scope of work is asking?
Right, this will clearly answer the scopes it's asking. It will determine whether we're allowed to lower speed limits or not. And this will also determine the effectiveness, whether we can, one, install stop signs on Florida Park Drive or not, or what really, will the, adding those landscape medians on Florida Park Drive have an impact, and if so, what type of impact will they have at all? They'll have all that data provided to you so you have educated decisions to make on moving forward and the data necessary.
And you're looking for direction from us today?
To move forward with the, with these studies.
Carl, I just have a quick question. Whether we're allowed to lower speed limits?
Right, you can't lower it for 30 miles an hour by state statute unless you do an investigation. This is doing that investigation, that's what, that $63,000 is.
That's what I needed clarified, just seems like a lot of money.
Well, I'm kicking and screaming, but I, I can't find a way out of this.
Well, yeah, and we discussed this, yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I want to solve the problem, I just, I...
Is the problem lowering speed limits or enforcing speed limits?
I think that's what the study's supposed to show us.
Sure that I buy into the fact, like, if you lower a speed limit, will that really stop somebody from cutting through? But I think this may actually yield those results, but I just want to urge council and also our public out there, if you're arguing for stop signs, the numbers are roughly, and there, this is, this may be misquoted, but if you drive a car a mile going 35 miles an hour, 80% of the emissions are created when you're accelerating from zero to 35 in that first acceleration. Starting an object in motion is much more energy-intensive than keeping an emotion, an object in motion. So the houses that are near these stop signs, if they were to be installed, would exponentially increase the amount of particulates that are entered into the air. And I only bring this up because a lot of our residents' concerns that we've heard about Florida Park Drive are about the health and safety of residents, and I think the health and safety are obviously tightly coupled, but the health in particulate matter is kind of irrelevant in a study like this, and I'm not saying that we should add it, I just would like that to be, the council to be aware of what can occur when you have stop signs and how that would very locally impact those homes that would be near the stop sign.
So, I mean, the only thing that would make me more comfortable is if I knew that when we had all of this data, that it could become maybe not a template, but a model or a reference for the other 19 roadways that we have that have safety problems. In other words, I wouldn't want to...
The first, the first one is going to be a citywide study, so that's going to cover all residential roads in the city. So it's a blanket-wide study. So we may not spend that $63,000 because there are 50 location counts, but if the data's inconclusive or they need additional counts, we have an allowance for two additional 25 sets of counts. So we may not spend that full $63,000, that's a not-to-exceed amount, but that $33,000 would give us some ideas on what is the real effectiveness of a median. We'd have true data specific to our, our city based on a similar type roadway and, you know, a stop sign signal warrant analysis, you know, has to meet certain criteria. It's just, it's just like a signal or stop sign. They got to meet, there's various warrants, there's different requirements they need to meet to be able to install those. So that could change over time, but, you know, we'd have some base information there on, you know, when and where we could actually install a stop sign.
Carl, just one other question and just asking just for reference, but rather than hire out, do we not have the talent in-house to do these? hire out, do we not have the talent in-house to do these studies ourselves?
No, because we, we have to do a lot of traffic count data. That's something that, we have another consultant that does traffic counts, but these, this firm does that as well. We, you have to specialize in this. You need to know where to meet the criteria of the statutes if you're going to be, to satisfy that the investigation was comprehensive enough. You need to have a technical background in doing that investigation and knowing when and where and how many point sites to study to do a blanket area-wide study. And we don't have staff that has ever done an area-wide blanket study for a speed limit analysis before.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not getting anywhere.
Carl, thank you for the presentation.
Leap on it.
I, I think this is an absolutely necessary action that we should be taking because we are growing, we are seeing more and more traffic accidents. We get daily, I get daily complaints, I shouldn't say we, I can't speak for everybody else up here, but on speeding, on things that we can do to lower speed limits. So, I think that, and this is pretty cost-effective, I have to say, for under $100,000 to do a citywide analysis, I'm very pleasantly surprised at this fee. So, my question is, where has this specific consultant, because to your point, you do need a technical background and there are very, there are a lot of specifics that go into a study like this. Do we know where Kimley Horn has previously done these studies?
It wasn't RFQ. I don't recall them offhand. They did provide a sample of one that they did. It was fairly recent, I think, within the past couple of years. I would have to, I'd be guessing at the name. I don't recall it offhand, but I can get you that information.
But they have done these before?
Yes.
Okay. And then how is it, forgive me, maybe I misheard you. I thought you said this was citywide, but there were certain locations that, and per the contract, it appears that there are only certain locations where, yeah, 50 locations in the city where speed is going to be detected. So, how are those locations determined?
Yeah, those, there's, there's reference to the DOT methodology on a blanket-wide study that they, there's certain parameters in there that they have to meet based on different information. So, they're going to review and come to us with some of those recommended locations. They'll meet with our staff in operations and make sure we have those 50 locations clearly identified and that meet all the criteria of that DOT methodology that has been used to do these area-wide studies. If that, if we determine 50 is not enough, that's why we have two more sets of 25 to add in some more, or if the data comes back inconclusive, if we can add some more.
Yeah, because I think one of the, the themes that we've said up here and the reason we've, we've kind of explained to our residents that it's very hard to upkeep our swales, upkeep all of our canals, upkeep all of our roads, because we have so many residential roads. I'm not sure that 50 is going to be enough. And I, and I'd like to make certain that there are specific, what I would call hotspots included, so making sure Cimarron Drive is included in that. We had a resident earlier mention Ponce de Leon and I think another street. So, I don't, I don't know if after that consultation, it would be incumbent upon us city council members to meet with staff individually and just go over those lists to make sure that, you know, any individual complaints we've received consistently, such as places like Cimarron, have made that list, or I just, I want to make sure that if we're doing this, it is going to in fact be comprehensive and that this is a one, a one-time thing. We're not coming back to the plate over and over.
Right. We, yeah, correct. We have too many roads to do, to do counts on every road. The cost would be, you know, not, not feasible. But we do know roads, you know, the residential collectors, those are more traffic, longer roads, usually, you know, we do get more of those calls of speeding on those roads. Then there's other roads which may be straight, may, you know, we, we have those complaints as well in our books of where known speed issues are. We'll even touch base with our Flagler Sheriff's Office, and we're going, that's why we're going to have a pre-meeting of looking at those initial locations, come together on agreement of those. If we need to bump up to 50, we'll, we have those additional two sets of 25 to add them on.
And then going off of that, so it's not just Kimley Horn coming in and saying, okay, so we've determined based on what we, on FDOT standards, that 1 through 50 of the roads are going to work in collaboration with the complaints we've received with staff and with FCSO?
Correct.
Okay.
And they're going to be in town. They've already come to the city and driven around, so that's part of it as well, trying to, they, they've done work in the area because they do work for developers as well, so they're very familiar with our city. So, they're going to use a lot of that information before, you know, even propose something.
Okay. And is pedestrian safety a consideration as a part of this analysis as well?
No.
It is not? It's completely separate?
Correct. This is all about just a, a speed limit posting study.
Okay. My last question is, could we possibly get a scope from them? I'm not proposing that it be included, but I would be curious while we're doing this to see what a stop sign analysis would look like for Cimarron, because that's come up before us several times. The safety on Cimarron Club has been a little quiet lately, but I can't imagine that it's just because people have magically stopped speeding on Cimarron. So, I know for Florida Park Drive, they're doing a completely different analysis, but is it possible to see what a four-way stop analysis would look like?
In the proposal, I think we have a line on breakdown already to do two signal warrants, so we could add on additional two signal warrants, you know, to, to Cimarron. And it, I can verify with them, but it should be the same price.
Okay. If it is, I think we might as well do it, because I know that's been an ongoing concern for a while. If it's not, then obviously it would need to come back, you know, to council, but I'd be curious to that.
And Carl, can you get us that information on what other studies these folks have done?
Yes, I, I can do that. I can provide you a copy of the RFQ as well as the proposed, the report that they did on, on the study that they included as a sample of what you'll see at the end of, what the final product will be.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my question.
And I guess I'll ask this too, on other projects they've worked on in other cities, does anyone ever do a follow-up as to whether these changes actually made a difference or not?
I can ask them that question. I do not know offhand.
Before we spend a hundred grand, if these guys have a track record of coming in, making changes, and nothing has changed, I'd kind of like to know that.
Yeah, I think, Vice Mayor, to your question, I've done a lot of research and I also worked with Chief Barry Hill on looking at what lowering speed limits from 30 to 25 does. And it has a, actually a significant impact on people's perception. For one reason or another, having a speed limit of 25 versus 30 does actually impact what people drive at. This was done months and months ago, I think, when this initially became an issue. But, I mean, I would welcome that as well, but I, I can tell you, I have looked into it, and it does make a difference, so.
So...
I have a comment.
Please.
I agree that this citywide study should be feasible for the city to do at the $63,000 and then the individual study for Florida Park Drive. But once this first study is done for the citywide, and then we find another area that needs to have an individual study done, are we going to spend another $33,000 to have that done?
There, there are two different studies. The one on Florida Park Drive is, is related to adding stop signs or adding medians in the roadway. They're not related to speed. So, that first one is just strictly speed. So, that second one would be if we want to do additional stop sign implementation or add medians on a roadway. We don't necessarily have to do another median study, but you would have to do a signal warrant study if you wanted to add a, a stop sign somewhere. You'd have to do, I mean, an all-way stop study, warrant.
So, each roadway would have to be, have another study done individually?
For a stop sign or traffic signal. A warrant is required.
Carl, just correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we, a couple of years or so ago, try a landscaping approach on Florida Park Drive?
Yes, we, along the right-of-way, we, we've added, we, we added some landscaping. I don't remember the total number. I think the first year might have been 10, and then we did a couple more after that. The first year was a big push. We've gone back and checked, and a lot of that landscaping has been successful and it's being well-maintained and, you know, it's, you know, not every homeowner's gone after those, those grants, but where it has been put in place, it seems to be a success for those, for those residents.
And then the, I think there's also the, did we make the lines bigger?
That, that will happen in the resurfacing, but it's not currently in the five-year plan. So, that was one of the items that I had in red there, only because it's the last outstanding item to do that is currently not funded in our five-year plan.
What would you call that, just off the top of my head?
Lane narrowing.
Lane narrowing, okay.
Yeah. You have narrower lanes, people drive slower.
Cool. Understood.
So, I have to ask city council members, so I guess we really need to ask for a consensus if this is a priority which will supersede some other expenditure as we go through our strategic action plan. It would seem to me that, listening to the residents and what I gather from city council members, it should become a priority, but I just have to question everyone that, you know, those dollars will probably come out of something that we consider less of a priority. That's just the way I'm thinking, the way the expense looks. I don't know if you agree with me on that, but...
Is this something that will come back next week on the consent agenda?
Which is just a workshop today.
No, but is this going to come back on the consent agenda next week? Or do we have time to get the requested material?
What is your plan for introducing this again?
Well, if you wanted that price on the signal warrant study on Cimarron Drive, I, I would have that number and I'd have to amend their fee amount to include that.
If it changes it, right? Because you said it might not change it.
It will change it. It would be the same cost, but they have to do another, you know, they have to do data collection and whatnot on those other two intersections, or, or maybe it's only one. We need to, we'll evaluate the roadway and say, okay, where's, where do it make sense to put stop signs? Do any of them even seem like they'd meet a warrant? We don't want to spin our wheels and waste dollars for no reason if we, we can tell just based, hey, it only serves 100 homes, there's no way it's going to meet a warrant, that we don't, we don't want to perform one. So, we need to take a quick look at it to see if there's any that we think would even be close to meeting a warrant, then we can do the formal study on it and get a price. It may be one, it may be two, and we can, I can come back to you with that amount if, if it determines that, and I can, I can, you know, I, I can speak to that at the meeting.
We're, we're still looking for a consensus to move forward with this item, so I have to ask each one of you, are you in favor of prioritizing this presentation and the dollars that you see?
I think I'm in favor of it. I think, I don't think we really have a choice, to be honest with you, is how I feel.
Councilman Potier?
I'm certainly in favor of it, and I apologize, I'm flipping through the sap. What did we budget for this?
It was $150,000.
Okay, so this is way under budget right now?
Correct.
Yeah. No, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Favor?
I'm in favor, but my prediction is that stop signs will not be viable on Florida Park Drive.
Okay. So, you have a, you have a unanimous consent to, to, to move this forward? There was an ask for some additional data, so does that give you the, what you, the direction that you're looking for today?
Yes, it does.
City manager, you're content with the direction that's been given? Okay. All right, we thank you for that. Now, if there's no other discussion by city council, yes, public comment, please.
Mary Kay Hayward. I'd like to just, I don't even know where to start. It's very loud. There was a study done in 2015 to establish the level of service on Florida Park Drive initiated by Mr. Cody, and that's what that study was for. It wasn't a speed study. It wasn't anything but to establish a level of service. And the noise study that he's talking about, where he said there was no overall problem, is misinformation. Ask the person that, I can't come up with his name right now. He said, no, I'm not going to say that it's not a problem, because our decibels of 63 to 68 are consistent all day long. And when it bumps up, when there's a truck going by or something, it's just evaluated out. So, no, there is a noise problem, and I think this council knows it. I don't think you're foolish enough to know that it isn't. And for Mr. Clufus's, on cue, pollution analysis of stop-and-go traffic, as with speed humps or stop signs or anything that slows traffic on Florida Park Drive, your air pollution study showed absolutely no pollution. Look it up. Moot point. No need to say it. Moot. Moot. M-O-O-T. Stop sign regulations require a signal warrant study per statute. I'd like that statute, please. I also have a request that I'm going to be returning to the city clerk. This will be a FOIA request for the concurrency study that was just performed. And I'm adding to that this Kimberly Horn proposal that he has brought up, because I would like to know the two spots on Florida Park that they are talking about studying, because as we already know from the Wawa traffic analysis, that you have failed your level of service on Florida Park Drive up to Farragut. And in that traffic impact analysis, it was recommended that that be four-laned, which I have been personally reassured by people, that is not possible because there is no right-of-way left to do that. In all, we are a one-off unicorn, as Mr. Grunwald has called us. We are not residential. We're not a major urban collector. It's like Chinatown. Sister mother, sister mother. Pick one. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time?
We're going to do a traffic study, but we're not concerned totally about how much traffic is actually cut through traffic, swapping from Palm Coast Parkway to Palm Harbor Parkway. Why aren't we taking care and finding out how much of that traffic is there? Back, I think it was 2015, the city council said, well, we did sort of a count. We counted it on one side of the road. Well, that's good, I reckon, for something, but we don't really have a count of how many tra, how, how much traffic gets crossing between the two just to get from one partway to another partway. It's sort of aggravating when you got two, the two partways that intersect for the specific purpose of exchanging traffic for, between the two partways. But anyway, why reinvent the wheel? All these cities around us are using traffic calming methods. Why haven't we contacted these cities to see how they are doing their studies to gather their information for where they use traffic calming? I mean, we, why reinvent the wheel? Find out. Thank you.
I live in Florida Park Drive before Celia Puglisi nearby, and I moved for the very reasons 20 years ago, because it started bad and it got worse. It's been, to us, it's been a study of the study of the study. When the two islands were approved by the administration of Ms. Holland, engineering spent $163,000 on the study. It was a beautiful study for the two islands, and then they was voted down. But we paid dearly $163,000. It's been, before that, like Mary Kay Hayward said, other studies in 2015, and it never resolves anything. We are concerned that this is going to be a big expenditure again, and it's going to go to nothing. We have cities in this, in Florida, in Ormond Beach, and everywhere, they come up with all kinds of traffic calming items, like for example in Ormond, Granada Boulevard, they're going to put these humps, right, to slow the traffic. What do they have to go through all these studies? It's a big expenditure for all of us, and they do it. So, yes, a good idea, find out from, from other cities, how they do it, please, so we can save some money and finally materialize something. And let's find something, and like with the, those two islands, that they only need, needed the, the council both years to be approved when they, we had the B's originally at 200, then, I don't know why, it went to 392, because it took a year to look it up, and then you bought it down. So, meanwhile, we spend all this money. meanwhile, we spend all this money in all these consultant studies. That's the only thing I can say. This is where we see, I'm going after you. It's the reality. Please look it up. Thank you.
Any other members of the public comment on this issue at this time?
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. Mike Norris, toting a place. Celia and Steve have been coming up here for years about this problem on Florida Park Drive. My, my past experience working with the military and on government installations, you work with the Provost Marshal's Office. That's basically the law enforcement for, for the installation. My suggestion would be to check with the Sheriff's Department and see if they have one certified in conducting staff, traffic studies of this sort. You could do it in-house. The Sheriff's Department works for us. So, talk to the sheriff about that and see if they have someone with those certifications. And also, when would a study be done? Will it be done before or after that Wawa goes in? Because it's going to completely change the traffic, and it's going to be just throwing good money after bad, which Celia's already brought up several times. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to talk about this issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Carl, do you want to respond to any of that? Clarify, or? I should come back to the deis. Do you want to make a comment?
Nothing at this time.
I do, Mayor, thank you. So, I know it's frustrating that we have to do another study with regards to the speed limits, but it has to be done. I have tried to save this step, not for money, quite kindly, but for time, because I would be crushed if somebody were to get into a fatal accident on Simron or Florida Park Drive or something to that effect, because one resident is one resident too many if that happens. This is a step that we have to take. We, unfortunately, the most frustrating part for me in this job is that there's 18 steps when there feels like there should be two in government, and this is unfortunately one of those. So, we are taking a necessary step to make sure we're being prudent. The proper research is guiding how we spend future monies. What I would hate to do is not spend less than $100,000 for a proper study that needs to be done, and then find out later on down the road that data that we already had was either out of date, not, not complete, or lacking in some way, shape, or form that did not justify the actions that we took or did not take. So, I understand the frustrations, I hear you all, but this is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do that's comprehensive, and that makes sure that we are guiding future monies in the right way. Because this is a drop in the bucket, to be quite honest with you. Less than $100,000 to do a citywide speed study and to look at some hotspots for stop signs is money well-spent. And what it does is it allows us to be very diligent, prudent, and mindful of how we spend larger monies if we are going to swap out a lot of speeds limit signs, if we are going to install stop signs, that type of thing. So, the study is projected to be done in May, I think, which is a pretty good timeline. I'm very happy with that timeline, so please thank the consultant for me in expediting this, because it's a long time coming, it's necessary for our residents, and I think this is the right move by council. So, I want to commend staff and council for taking this step.
I would just like to comment, in absence of the mayor, would you like to comment first?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think that once we have established the studies, we should also try to establish what our goals are, to try to limit Florida Park traffic, too. There were some interesting comments about trying to figure out which cars are pass-through cars and which ones aren't. I think that'd be extremely difficult to figure out, to be honest. Just off the top of my head, I don't, like, without monitoring like license plates and trying to figure out the directional basis for which...
Maybe I could employ the Sheriff's Office with their LDR system. That might be something.
I can provide some feedback. I believe back in the, we have looked at that, and the city cannot restrict that road to local traffic only, because that was something we looked at when we imposed the truck ordinance, and that's why we were able to restrict the truck, truck flow, but we couldn't restrict that road to local traffic only.
I agree with that. The reason I was bringing that up was a measurable change in speed or additional stop signs like we're talking about. The goal is to try to stop people from the cut-through, right? Because we're not going to stop people going down Florida Park Drive. They live there. You can't, like, the only traffic you'll be able to eliminate is cut-through traffic. That's the only traffic we'll be able to eliminate. And my comment regarding our air quality tests, that was money that we spent as a city, and the hyper-localized information that we've been sent to by the gentleman sitting next to you is most oftentimes regarding particulates in the air, especially brake matter and things along these lines. So, that was a hyper-focused response. So, we have been spending money at this, and we are going to continue spending money at this, but it, I think it's a little bit flabbergasting that, you know, we're being almost like a console for trying to prevent an issue, and I would like to know how much traffic is cut-through traffic, because at maximum, that's the amount that we're going to be able to eliminate off Florida Park Drive, and I think that'll come next.
If I could just add to that, we could probably look for ways to reduce the commercial traffic that's on Florida Park as well.
Oh, that's what I mean.
It's, it's, it could be identified, and a program could be put in place to relieve some of that, I'm sure.
Yep, and if we know what that number is, I think that's the maximum amount of traffic that you could actually alleviate off of Florida Park Drive.
So, any final comments here? Again, we have a consensus.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's good. I agree with the study being done. I think that it would be a feasible study. However, I'd like to go back to the comment that Mr. Norris made. Will it be done prior to, because I don't know, I know Theresa said that it would be done in May. Is that prior to or after the Wawa comes in?
I'm assuming it's going to be prior to, but I don't know the completion date. Maybe someone in the back of the room has a better timetable on when it'll be completed.
So, if it's done prior to, how?
By the time I look back...
Excuse me?
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Well, I think we have studies, Councilwoman Hyder, on what the projected traffic increase will be. Now, I know there's dispute as to the accuracy of those, but at the very least, we do have a measurable. So, I think it, I think it's a great point that when we do, when Kimberly Horn does present, it's, give us a presentation, that we bring that up again, and say, look, you know, we also have this added variable, this projected increased traffic count, and talk to them at that point.
That makes sense.
And those would be done on a worst-case basis. So, what they're looking at is the maximum hard effect of that increase. So, it wouldn't be, it's, it would be rare, if not unlikely, that it would ever exceed the study that was done for that. Because again, it's done on a worst-case basis, as all these studies are done, right?
Yeah, that is correct, and we will make sure we have that data and it's analyzed in there, because lots of times we're, we're close. Like, I'm at Kansas at I-95, ready to change. DOT did a study three or four times now, and, you know, a few times they're like, oh, we're getting close, or this one, this intersection's, you know, not too far off. You know, now they are warranted. It is, you know, going to happen at some point in their work program. It's not, then, I don't think it'll be in the work program, it's going to be in one of the push-button projects, but it is a project that will get funded on their list. It's just they haven't identified when yet. But, if we have some more, if it's close and Wawa's not open yet, and we have that data, then we're going to know, yes, we probably will meet a warrant to put it in as soon as Wawa opens up, so we'll have that information. We can look at it.
Thank you.
All right. City manager, I'll give you a shot. Any, any comments regarding this before I ask Mr. Cody if he has sufficient direction to go forward?
No, Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate the dialogue from city council, and distilling the consensus is really helpful to our staff. And it sounds like Carl has a little bit of homework. I'm not sure if we can get this back during the next business, but I believe the next business is his first of February.
No, it would be, well, yeah, it would be next week is our intent. I think I have all the information. I'll do my best to get it to you, get that out this week, so everyone has it.
Thank you, Carl.
As part of the agenda packet.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Now, without speeding ahead, I will move to number five. Is that correct? The Strategic Action Plan for Analysis Commercial Solid Waste Hauling. Correct. Read that.
No, I got ahead of myself.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Alyssa Roscoe. I'm your residential collection supervisor. With me today, I have Zachary Cooper, who is our solid waste inspector, and will be providing an analysis of our commercial solid waste hauling in the city of Palm Coast. During, as Ms. Johnston mentioned earlier, under the strong resilient economy pillar, and staff to conduct an analysis of commercial solid waste hauling. With, with that analysis, I kind of want to go over where our current processes are and why we do those. Per City Code of Ordinance 41-1, it is the intent, and City of Palm Coast require all residential, commercial, and industrial establishments within the boundaries of Palm Coast to have their solid waste, recycling, and other items collected, transported, and disposed of in a proper, sanitary, and efficient manner. It is further the intent of city council that this collection, transporting, and disposal shall be accomplished only by these persons or entities authorized by the city by means of a franchise agreement. Currently, the city structure is that we have a non-exclusive franchisee agreement with our solid waste, commercial solid waste haulers. That would be the opposite of what we have for our residential collection. For our residential collection, we have an exclusive franchise agreement. They're self-franchisees, but only the, the selected company will service those needs. Under the exclusive, the non-exclusive for commercial, the, this requires waste haulers to register as franchisees through the below process. A copy of their local business tax receipt is required, proof of insurance or certificate of insurance, naming the city of Palm Coast as an additional insured, a copy of their bond, and a copy of...
[coughs]
This is sent out, this is done annually, and franchisees will receive their renewal applications approximately two months prior to the expiration date on this franchise agreement. The franchise fees received from those commercial providers are used to support the general fund. Franchise fees used to, for, received from the residential provider is used to support our solid waste fund. Proceeds from these are primarily used to manage the administration of the contracts and to support Public Works Street Department as these are large vehicles with heavy weights that are driving on and off of our roads. There is some keep-up required with that. Currently, for this fiscal year, we have 26 franchisees. One thing I will say is you may have one franchisee name, but they will have multiple agreements. Agreements are required for both your MSW, your municipal solid waste, as well as your C and D or construction and demolition materials. So, they must register as a franchisee for either of those. And that payment and financial reporting is available on the slide currently. And the annual fee is as follow for a commercial solid waste application, $2,500, and then the construction and demolition is $1,000 per year. These were instituted in 2008. The monthly franchise fee, the franchisee shall pay the city a monthly fee of 10% of their gross revenues billed monthly for commercial solid waste collection. This is, if there are no gross revenues, they are still required to send in that, that report showing that they collected no funds for that process. They are required to provide that by the 15th of each month following the collection, and this is a reporting requirement, as I stated, regardless of whether they receive anything. On the graph, you can see, on the table, you can see where our franchise fees, this is only for the commercial portion, this does not include our residential collection. Currently, for fiscal year, for fiscal year 2023, which we just finished, there was $411,686 contributed to the general fund through this, through these agreements. So, what we're asking for today is direction. We have budgeted for a consultant, but there are a number of ways we can go for commercial hauling. We could continue with the non-exclusive agreement, which we currently have, obviously seeking process improvements and any efforts continuing forward as council wishes. There's the option of an exclusive franchisee agreement, as I stated, that is similar to our residential collection contract, where it would be out, a consultant would be hired, notices would be sent out, bidding process, and then it would involve our direct oversight of whoever the selected hauler would be. The third option would be to enlist in-house services. For in-house services, you'll have similar items, such as the consultant and the notices. However, we would also need obvious large equipment purchases, staff from drivers and helpers to mechanics that can actually service those vehicles. Before we move forward with that, I do want to let you know, any of the, any changes other than keeping the one we have currently would require a three-year notice of change of that franchisee structure to all affected parties, and that is Florida statute. It should also be noted, as recent as last year, bills have been submitted to the Florida House that may affect our future planning with this. For example, House Bill 975 was introduced. It did end up not passing. However, alternates that are similar are also being presented. And what that House bill would be is to prohibit municipalities and counties from prohibiting or unreasonably restricting private entities from providing recycling or solid waste management services to certain properties. I.e., if we were to go into this structure and that a new House bill were to be accepted, then we would have to go back to the non-exclusive, which we have currently. Our intent, again, is to prepare a request for proposal to hire a consultant in assisting this with this priority, depending on which direction the council would like to go. And those, again, has already been funded in our solid waste fund for fiscal year 24. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Yes. So, are you able to do at least a preliminary forecast on what the revenue differentials would be between the three? Because I think you're asking us a question without any data.
So, the data that we have currently is that for our non-exclusive is 10% of their monthly revenues in addition to the application fee. For exclusive one for our residential, it's the same rate. So, exclusive or non-exclusive, it really just depends on what we set that franchise fee at. We could stick with the current structure that we have and perhaps use the consultant to say, okay, we need to up the franchise fee to this amount. That could incur or could allow additional revenue. Or, we could look at process improvement on what we currently have as far as enforcement, allowing, right now, we allow the franchisee to send in what their, their billings were versus checking in with them. So, there could be some process improvement available, but we just need to know before we hire the consultant, are we going to, are we looking to keep exclusive and raise the franchise fee? That would increase revenue, or if we bring it in-house, obviously there's revenue involved, but cost as well.
Is this a place where the League of Cities could be helpful for comparative purposes? Because I don't have any benchmarks here. In other words, I don't know what the, the study would cost, so I don't know if the study generates a change in what we have that's valuable to us. I have no way to know that.
For reference, the last consultant that we budgeted for, for our residential collection contract, that was $50,000. Something of the scope would be a bit larger, because there's an analysis of what is existing in the community. But we've just, we don't have the data currently to say what was previously, what could potentially be, if we don't know what our potential option would be.
And we wouldn't enjoy it for at least three years.
Minimum, yes, sir. The three-year requirement of notice.
Comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, this was admittedly something that I had brought up, because I think as we, specifically as we expand west, we have an opportunity to kind of start on a fresh slate with what we can see from the chart. If we're getting 10% of their revenues, and that's $400,000, they're making a killing. So, there's definitely a revenue source out there.
Well...
Well...
A good killing.
They're making, they're making a good bit of money. But, but, I don't know if the but, to what I'm imagining your point's going to be, is the cost benefit there. That I don't know, and it doesn't sound like we know as a group yet. Candidly, I'd be open to comment from my colleagues, obviously, but based on your comment earlier, Mayor, with regards to prioritizing and really looking at what our city needs and what we need to focus on, I would be willing to drop this as a priority at this time, or moving forward, I should say. But I am curious before doing that, of looking at the League of Cities and seeing, because I know from going to events at the League of Cities, there are a lot of cities that do this, and they do make money. So, I don't know that we need to go to the consultant route yet. I think that maybe a little bit of in-house research first, without spending money on a consultant to look, and I'm happy to help. I mean, I'm happy to make calls, I'm happy to talk to other municipalities, so please, you know, let me know how I can help you. Because I do think this is an opportunity, but I'm not ready to spend money on consultants for it yet. I think that's where I'm falling.
And to your point, we already pay a shiny penny to the League of Cities, which we might as well get our fair deal.
You pay a very nice shiny penny to them, yes.
So, for direction, councilman, you want to make some comments?
The essence of time, I concur with Councilwoman Potieri. I think we're on the same boat. We're in-house, in-house.
We don't want to miss the boat, obviously.
Right.
Maybe we can figure it out just by doing the League of Cities. You don't have to limit it to the League of Cities. There may be some others. it to the League of Cities, there may be some others, um, and directly contact some other municipalities. We also have support from the Northeast Regional Council, which may also have data available that might be helpful to us as well. So it sounds to me like that would be the direction we'd like you to go and come back to us in a reasonable amount of time to discuss it with, you, you kind of know what we're asking now. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, thank you for the direction, I appreciate it.
I will open up the item to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time?
More than a comment, Celia Buglisi, more than a comment, I have a question. Who is serving us now, eh, on the non-exclusive?
I think the comment was a, a number of different entities, there are.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-six.
Seventeen, you said?
We have twenty-six.
Twenty-six different companies.
Twenty-six different com- companies, and so, and with an exclusive, we'll go just to only one. But it's, I totally agree with, uh, Councilwoman Pontieri, you know, one more consultant. It was mentioned that we have half a million revenue, almost, and if fame broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Are there any members, any additional members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, is there any additional discussion here? I think you have your marching orders, so I appreciate that, thank you. We now move to the last item under our presentations, which would be a resolution, and I will ask council to read that in, and then I guess we have a presentation.
Okay, this resolution is about Fire Station twenty-two and twenty-six additional expenses and grant agreement. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving a state fire marshal grant agreement, additional design services, and design phase expenses for the new Fire Station twenty-six and Fire Station twenty-two replacement. Authorizing the city manager or designee to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, good afternoon, Councilwoman. Mayor Halton, I'm Eric Chibo, architect for the Stormwater and Engineering Department, and I'm here with Chief Barry Hill.
Good afternoon.
And we are pleased to provide an update on the design of the new fire stations and approval of the state fire marshal grant agreement. Replacement of Fire Station twenty-two. The current Fire Station twenty-two was built in nineteen seventy-seven and no longer serves the current needs of the fire department. Improvements and maintenance over time could not adequately address the functional and firefighter health, safety issues associated with the building. Additionally, customized apparatus was required due to the size of the bays. Replacement was determined to be necessary, and due to the constraints of the existing site, an available parcel was purchased at three fifty Palm Coast Parkway Northeast, selected based on its size, location relative to response times, and its affordability. The new site is located approximately one-third of a mile east of the existing site. New Fire Station twenty-six. A fire station location study was performed in twenty twenty to determine the most effective site to achieve the required reduced response times. With anticipated development in the area south of State Road one hundred, east of Bel Tare, and the proposed extension of Citation Boulevard to connect Bel Tare Boulevard and Seminole Woods Parkway, an existing city-owned site was selected on Seminole Woods Boulevard for the construction of the new fire station. Staff presented to council for approval last February the design and pre-construction services contracts for various fire station projects, which included the replacement for Fire Station twenty-two and a new Fire Station twenty-six. The station design has progressed through the schematic phase, and we'll be requesting approval from council to continue on to the construction document phase with the goal of the development of the prospective guaranteed maximum prices for construction. To give council a brief, brief update on the design, as with the Southern Recreation Center, the prototype for the new fire stations are creating an exciting new vernacular for the civic architecture of Palm Coast. The design is a modern expression of some very primary elements of historic Florida architecture, with glazing to provide the natural light needed to support the vehicle bays, large overhangs for solar heat gain reduction, and wraparound verandas for energy efficiency and a welcoming entry. The layouts for both Fire Station twenty-two and twenty-six are primarily the same, with only deviations being the inclusion of the battalion chief quarters and a training tower in the plan of Station twenty-two. The programming phase for the facilities involves extensive planning sessions with multiple, with multiple design charrettes that included the architect, contractor, fire personnel, and various other city departments. The original Fire Station prototype was reviewed and determined what did and did not work, and staff visited other stations and received input from various other municipalities. The result of this collaboration is an approximately ten thousand square foot prototype plan that incorporates all of the current and future needs of the fire services. It's efficient and provides for a healthy, safe environment for staff. The ingenious, ingenious clustered layout of the sleeping quarters allows for a more rapid call deployment than what is currently experienced in the existing station plans. Firefighter health and safety was another primary factor in the design, with particular attention being given to the post-event decontamination process. Final design is a fire services facility that will need, serve the needs of the city well into the future. Fire Station twenty-two is in the five-year, in the six-five-year CIP plan, and will be funded primarily with fire impact fees, three million dollars in ARPA funds, and capital project funds for the non-capacity portions of the project. This high-level conceptual construction estimate includes a ten-point-two percent cost escalation, ten percent cost contingency, and several alternates that could be potentially completed at a later date. During the design phase, will be additional estimates completed at the sixty and ninety percent design phases, where modifications to the design may be made, or additional alternates identified to address project cost overruns. There are specific deadlines associated with the ARPA funding, that mandates that the funds are obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and fully expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Fire Station twenty-six is also in the city's five-year CIP, and will primarily be funded by fire impact fees and a state appropriation of five million dollars through a state fire marshal grant. As with Station twenty-two, this estimate is a high-level number that includes cost escalation, contingency, and alternates. The project will also include estimates at sixty and ninety percent construction documents, where we can address any budgetary issues. There are specific deadlines associated with the state appropriation funding as well that mandates the grant will be, must be executed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and fully expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Construction documents for both Fire Station twenty-two and twenty-six are scheduled to be completed in June of twenty twenty-four, and guaranteed maximum prices for both will be presented to council for approval in the summer of twenty twenty-four. The construction, the construction schedule for both projects are dependent upon the outcome of the final GIP numbers. Fire Station twenty-six is a higher priority for the fire department to reduce the response times, however, Fire Station twenty-six has an earlier deadline to spend the ARPA funding. The current cost estimates and projected revenue reflect the three-point-six million dollar budgetary shortfall, which could be potentially be reduced with receiving.
Eric, I'm just gonna step in for one second, because I think you misspoke there. The ARPA funding deadline is associated with Fire Station twenty-two. So although twenty-six has a greater priority from a response procedures, twenty-two has the timeline restriction associated with the ARPA funding.
Oh, thank you for the question, Chief. So there will also be out the cost savings to construct both fire stations simultaneously, and the team's goal will be to continue to monitor the fire impact fee revenue and to analyze project construction costs during the design phase and make any reasonable adjustments to the phasing, maximizing the benefits of concurrent construction. Council actions are for the approval of a design professional services agreement with Schenckel Schultz Architecture for design development through construction and administration of Fire Station twenty-two of six hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-seven cents, and twenty-six of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Approval of design phase expenses of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to cover permit, permits, purchase of wetland impact credits, additional design and pre-construction services that may be warranted. Staff is also requesting council approval for the execution of the grant agreement, the grant agreement with the Florida Department of Financial Services for the state appropriation received by the city. Future council actions would be for the approval of the guaranteed maximum price amendments for construction. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I would say I also commend the, the previous Fire Station layout, because it doesn't seem like we had too many crazy drastic changes, which kind of speaks to us having a good building that's already existing too, so I just commend the forethought prior. Besides that, I mean, we have to support our firefighters and with our growing population, this is something that's a necessity, so I appreciate the diligence and all the hard work, and especially the grant funding.
Councilwoman Hyder, a question or comment from the presentation now at this time?
Questions?
For, thank you, Mayor, for the design, um, what type of future growth are we, are we positive this will accommodate?
Can you, can you say that again, Ms. Pontieri?
Sure, so the, um, the comment was made that, excuse me, this will accommodate both current needs and future needs. We're experiencing a lot of growth right now.
How much future is there?
Yeah, how much room do we have?
So, uh, the station would house, uh, Station twenty-two would house nine personnel at a time, um, potentially, um, with the, that would be the, the maximum amount of the bunkroom capacity, which includes the north-end battalion chief, who's currently at Station twenty-four, which is, literally, he's in the lobby, um, because we've, we've grown faster than we've, than we've grown, if that makes any sense. So and then Station twenty-six would house eight firefighters. So every time we build a fire station, we always make room for our partners with Flagler County Fire Rescue to do a rescue or an ambulance, um, that's staffed with firefighters and paramedics. We run three-person engine companies, um, but we also consistently have intern and volunteer riders with us, so a four-person, um, capacity is kind of the floor for us. And then Flagler County, um, runs, uh, two-person rescues that also, they're consistently clearing new paramedics and new paramedic firefighters. So a three-person option for them i- is kind of the situation. And then when we upstaff for a hurricane, or hopefully, we don't have to do it today, but we have significant, um, weather occurring today, um, when we upstaff in those situations, it gives us a little bit of flexibility. In those situations, we, we have sheriff's deputies, Commander Reynolds will spend a night in a firehouse, um, in those kind of scenarios where, so we have some ability to do that. If you notice, the way we considered the design is the number one priority is our citizens. Firefighters are willing to risk a lot to save a lot, I know you know. So everything about the station is designed to promote, um, increased response. So all, where we're the slowest, we're closer, so that we're faster. The second most priority, and I know also that you know, is, um, the cancer epidemic and the health and safety of our firefighters. So we've done everything we can to keep the carcinogenic stuff out and to keep firefighters in places that are considered clean, um, and to help them to do that. So those are kind of the priorities associated with that. The team from engineering has just been amazing to work with, Carl and Eric, but also Mark Tran, the project manager, who's not here today, have really been fantastic in helping us to identify our priorities. The thing that's a little bit different about these stations is that we made the bays bigger. If you go by any of our fire stations, you'll see some of our stuff parked outside. Well, the base space is the cheapest space, so we're kind of hoping that we see some come down on these numbers when we get the, uh, the guaranteed maximum price, because the square foot estimates that we're seeing, um, the price per square foot is significantly different than what we estimated during the impact fee time. We're looking at well over nine hundred dollars a square, when what we estimated the impact fee time was under six hundred dollars a square foot. So that being the case, uh, those are, does that answer your question?
In part, I, I guess my, the heart of my question, because I appreciate that information as well, but the heart of my question really is, do you all see yourselves busting at the seams again in another four or five years after these are built?
So the question is, do we see ourselves anticipating future? So fire stations, like, they have to be in the spot, right? And so we have some land already associated with the Palm Coast Park DRI, um, that is a part of this, and our impact fee was designed to fund three fire stations, um, at around fifteen million dollars. Obviously, as you can see, we came super close to getting a ten million dollar influence, but we got a five million dollar, uh, influx of, of funding from the state for this scenario, but that, that impact fee does not, even with the escalators included in it, isn't funding the growth, um, today. We'll bring that back to you in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, is when I believe it's scheduled to be relooked at.
The impact fee?
Yes, ma'am.
That was my next question, so I appreciate you covering that.
And so then the two areas that we anticipate, that we're watching today for when our current, you know, when our next growth model is going to be, is that northwest corridor of the city, that's US one Palm Coast Park DRI, but also the southeast corridor of the city, the Roberts Road Colbert area. Those are two areas that we have an extended response time. You know, when we started this project, um, we told you that every person that slept in Palm Coast lived five miles from a fire station. One of the projects that I've told Ms. Bevan we're working on this year in the fire department is to show what our, what our, what our value we bring is. And a huge part of that is our value in ISO. We, we estimate that it's about a thousand dollars a house if you sleep five miles from a fire station. Well, definitely, we have residents, and some of the most concerned residents that have been a part of some of the recent discussions, um, that don't enjoy that today because of some changes associated with some response things, um, in the system. When Station twenty-six hits, that will go really close back to the hundred percent, but the very northwest corridor will not be. And so there's definitely places that could go in that'll be more than five miles. We're working very tightly with community development to say if our next station will occur, um, in that northwest corridor and the southeast one. There, there might be a time then for us to decide that we need to do two stations, again, like we're trying to do today. Maybe there's some reasons why it makes sense, maybe we're digging a big hole for stormwater, and that dirt can help with these projects. That's certainly part of some of the things that we're looking to do in this scenario. But as we grow those two areas, we're, we're actually kind of believe that the southeast corridor, um, will, um, have the call volume first, and Flagler Beach, who we partner and help all the time, but they'll absorb some of that from us. And, and we don't necessarily want to put, uh, uh, another growing community out in that kind of way. Whereas the north end, if we do that, the station that's there has some room to take on some more calls, um, way more than they did. We actually did fifteen thousand in this calendar year. You saw that in the fiscal year, we did just over fourteen thousand. So you can see what a huge jump it's been in the six months since we started occupying the airport fire station. So, uh, those are where we're forecasting, then we also know that a gap area is the white view area, and we have land there for a mini-fire station, and, you know, we're trying to figure out, um, how we can develop our funding and our growth in a way that's responsible and meets our residents' needs.
So it sounds like, um, the plan for future growth is additional stations based on geography, not necessarily necessary growth within these two stations. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then my other questions are focused around funding. Obviously, we see, if I'm reading everything right, we've got a shortfall of one-point-nine million for twenty-six and a shortfall of one-point-seven for twenty-two. Do we have a current appropriations ask, uh, for this year, for, for either one of these?
My understanding is that we would not be allowed to ask again for Station twenty-two because we were vetoed. And we do not have a second ask for, uh, Station twenty-six. We're gonna get some, uh, so Eric, you may want to help me here if I don't want to talk out of turn, but, because this is definitely not, this isn't on fire, so I'm not as good at it. But, um, that being said, my understanding is that, uh, the numbers that we're seeing are higher-end estimates, and that we believe when we do a more detailed look, and, and we can, you know, uh, there's potential that we can make some, some adjustments to make sure that we're able to come in within a budgetary way. But there's also something, you know, that we're showing you today, is that, um, this is, this is something that we have to consider, um, as we're looking into those areas.
Yes, we, we will be working very, very closely with the contractor and the, and the architect to really fine-tune the design and to look at any items that we can to value engineering, bring, bring the projects as close to budget as possible.
So what is the plan then? I, I mean, if we're looking at funding these, which I, I want to do, um, but this is quite a bit, it's a lot of money over budget. So what is the plan if, I mean, I would assume, no matter how hard you work, I, you're not going to be able to make up almost four million dollar shortfall. So what are we, what are we planning here?
Well, there's a couple of options, but one of the things that I believe is that we, we're looking at square feet in our estimate, um, today, not in the smarter way that we're going to. So after we get some more detailed estimates from them, based on approval of going forward with some of these design things that we're asking for today. Because by far, the largest, uh, area is the bay area, that's also the cheapest area. So, uh, a bay square foot is not the same as a kitchen.
So just put some Murphy beds in the bay, I mean, that's, that'll solve it.
Yeah, we can cut four and go to bunk beds. No, uh, so the, those are kind of our, um, those are part of what we looked at. We've also, we, this is not, in our opinion, a rich design. It, it's designed to do, uh, you know, what, what we need it to do, but also, we don't want to spend, um, the money and then need something additional. So it's also designed to allow the station to, uh, have, have growth associated with, uh, response. If, if a rescue needs to be there, we're hoping that it does, right? We would love for those residents, certainly Station twenty-two, that's where a rescue is today. And so housing that situation would be a good thing. And there's, uh, been consideration for the county to put a specialized piece of equipment at Station twenty-six. They're reassessing their whole thing and also building new fire stations. So I'm not sure where they are with that today, I just know that, um, putting a specialized, what would they call a heavy rescue in that south end of town was something they were considering. We're, we're always looking to find ways to, um, be efficient with our funds and to, um, make sure that we spend every dollar in a way, and we're also always looking, um, you know, we had a grant conversation earlier today, and our experience as subject matter expert, not at grants, but at the fire service, we've done really well in trying to make sure that we find the money that's out there, um, rather than teach someone else about how to find the money that's out there.
Patrick does a good job too. I mean, he's constantly getting us grants, right? So...
With the Speaker of the House today also, as, uh, the session opens up, doing the, uh, doing our color, our color guard is up there, our honor guard is up there doing the colors.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate answering those questions, Chief Barry Hill, and, and I appreciate the presentation, thank you. Just, um, want to be mindful of the dollars as we move forward with this.
I mean, I share the same concern, so if we have a budgeted amount, we're not working backwards from that budgeted amount. We seem to be, you know, significantly over, forecast over budget, which is, is concerning. And I do understand that there are a number of things that have caused that, everything from materials and design and on and on. Um, I don't know if we're in the budget process, not allocating enough upfront so that we come in on target, but it seems that we are, we've created a precedent to come in over budget every budget cycle. Uh, I'd like to find a way to break that cycle. Um, you know, in the distant future, as we do grow, we do have other options. Uh, we have, uh, land available and people to talk to that could help us finance these things, but for right now, we're, we're not quite there yet. Um, and we're filling out our need within, let's call it, the existing current Palm Coast, so, but I share the same, same concern. Anyway, um, what direction are you looking for from us today? And I, I'm sorry, did, were there other comments from city council members?
No comment. Thank you for the presentation.
What kind of direction do you need?
Yes, sir, so we're looking for consensus, it can be, or it can be, or it can come to a vote. At our next council meeting, this, this resolution will be there to both approve the design fees and also to approve our agreement, um, with the state fire marshal's office for the grant for $5 million.
Um, so, you opened the door and said that you could still work with the numbers a little bit, um, but if you're looking for us at the next meeting to vote on a hard number?
But we're not voting on the total construction costs. We're voting on the design fee, um, associated with, um, so on the slide that you see today.
Which you have no flexibility in.
Oh, no, no, sir.
No flexibility there?
No, we have, we have...
I tried.
Yeah, we have shared the pencil as best we can, yes.
All right, uh, it's my, uh, it looks to me like you have consensus...
I can add this, Mayor, that some of the design fee expenses are associated with wetland mitigation credits that were offset by a discount that we received when we purchased the Station 22 land. It's not a one-to-one, but it's really close.
Okay, all right. Uh, it's my understanding that we have, uh, consensus to move forward with the design, uh, expenses as you presented them. So that'll come back at the next business meeting for vote.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Oh, and I did want to follow up. I believe there was a question regarding the existing fire station 22 earlier in the day. So we will be, we're working with our, the, our design professionals now and the contractors to work on the proposals and the, and the options for, for that existing station, and we should be presenting the council, most likely in March.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And while the chief is still sitting, I will make you come up again. So you, you, you mentioned it very casually and very briefly. So, it is an incredible honor that Patrick and your honor guard were selected to bring the colors before the Speaker of the House and the legislature today. So, you'll all get to see the picture of it, but that, throughout the entire state of Florida, they chose your folks. So we couldn't be more proud. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to see it, but it's quite a sight to behold, it truly is. So please congratulate each one of them for us, it's a big deal.
Thank you, Mayor, I will. Thank you.
We now move on to final public participation, so I would invite any members of the public that would like to address any items that were not previously discussed on today's agenda to please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and I will go to city council members. Um, any final comments for today?
I just have a couple of quick questions for our, um, city manager. We have a couple of things that are supposed to be coming back to us to counsel. One is the, our...
Vice Mayor, do me a favor, so, uh, for counsel, could you speak into the mic so that, thank you.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. A couple of items that I know are coming back to us, and I just want to get an update. We have, um, an RFP on the forensic audit that should be coming back to us. I'm just wondering if we have a time or date?
Uh, no, Vice Mayor, I do not have a timeline for you because, um, we are developing the timeline to actually release it. And I actually have a meeting on Friday specific to that topic.
So we haven't released it yet?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an idea how, um, much time we would give it? Like 45 days, 60 days, whatever?
It would be consistent to our other timelines requesting, uh, proposals. So you're looking at, I would say, maybe, once it's released, a couple of months, roughly.
Okay. And also, we should have a sign ordinance coming back to us. I'm just wondering if we have an update on when that is coming back.
I believe that's coming back in March, yes. March 19th, business meeting.
Oh, okay, great, terrific, thanks.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
Thank you. Um, I mentioned, uh, this, well, a little bit earlier. I do want to recognize National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Thank you so, so much to all of our officers, everything that you all do. Um, and I also want to just, um, send out my condolences to Deputy Sheriff Moniz, uh, passing 13 years with our department, 26 years with Fort Lauderdale, and also an Air Force veteran, so clearly a life of service. And I think it's a testament to the character of people that we have in our sheriff's office. So, um, condolences to his family and friends, and a thank you to sheriff's office, and particularly to our sheriffs who keep us safe every Tuesday while we're here. I know, make me feel better. So thank you very much for all that you all do. And I sent a text to Sheriff Staley and Chief Strobridge last week because there are all these stories and press releases coming in about, you know, drug busts and just things that our sheriff's office has been doing. And I mean, they've just been on point. You guys have been doing a great job. So pragmatically speaking, I mean, wow, great job keeping us safe, really, really appreciative of that. Um, excuse me, gosh, I'm so sorry. I would like consensus, there's been, um, I think it's some of the last few kind of charged meetings on development with regards to notice requirements. Um, so I've spoken to staff a little bit on what our LDC calls for currently in notice requirements, when we are looking at zoning variances, things like that. And I, I think that we're pretty close to what surrounding counties and municipalities do, but I would like to see a workshop come before us, especially as we're reopening the comp plan, um, specifically on that issue, um, just with regards to timing of notices, what types of notices are required, and also, um, how many feet from the development that those notices are required for. Um, so I think just a small presentation from staff would be, um, probably helpful, I think, for all of us up here, but also for the public. So I'm looking for consensus just from council members that may be getting that put on the calendar at a workshop.
I'm not, could you help me understand? So, pick a place, give you an example, um...
I don't understand your question.
I don't understand your question. So, we're looking to look like other places?
Well, no, I just want to make sure we're standard. And if, and if there's anything else that we can do, because...
Assuming there's some standard.
So I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
So we had before us the, um, I think it was the Old Kings, um, Road Apartment Complex, I can't remember the name of it, um, for the 210 apartments. And there was a lot of uproar with regards to notice not being received. Now, I think at the end of the day, the applicant did provide the notice that it's legally required to provide. What I want to make sure is that what our requirements are, are in fact achieving what the intent is made to achieve. So, for instance, addresses were pooly, were clearly pooled for an entity from the property appraiser's website, but if you look at the actual addresses where officers of those entities could be contacted, they weren't even close, they weren't even in the same state. So, just kind of reevaluating whether or not our current requirements are actually getting the job done.
Public noticing requirements?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, now I understand.
So are you asking basically for staff at a workshop to come in and tell us what we're presently doing?
What we're doing, and then, and compare it to other municipalities and counties, just to make sure that we're not kind of, that we're, that we're standard, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that it's providing, again, the intent behind what our requirements are calling for.
Maybe other communities are doing it wrong, too, right?
Well, right, but so we'll compare.
Could be, but I think, I think it's a worthwhile inquisition, um, just to, to alleviate, I think, some of the common, I mean, this has been a common concern that we've received in this chambers pretty often, quite lately.
So I, the, the, the good news is, I think, um, our, our attorneys probably are very familiar with all of that and can probably summarize that fairly easily, at least for some number of communities that you deal with.
I would assume...
What the noticing requirements for a public hearing on development, land development are?
Um, I mean, well, typically, they're just going to be governed by the statute.
Right, well, okay, whatever it is.
So there's a state statute?
Well, the statute, there's, there's statute, but then there's, we also have them in our, in our, in our Palm Coast ordinance as well.
For the 300, 500 feet from...
Correct, so, so that's what I'm saying. I think we need to look at...
No, but you can look at that, right?
Um, sure, if you want to let me know what specific it's for, a zoning, a rezoning.
Well...
You know, what, something that I can...
In other words, I don't want to send staff off on a wall tear here without really understanding the...
Yeah, and I guess, if I could ask Mr. DeLorenzo, because I spoke with him, he could probably distill this a little bit better for me. Um, he's, he's sent me some notice requirements that are in our current LDC and a very high-level summary of what some other municipalities are doing, so perhaps you can help me out.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Um, all that information that, um, you requested and we put together, I think we could put that into a, a quick, uh, PowerPoint and then share that with the rest of the council and the public.
That would be great.
And then, um, based on that, uh, if there's any requested changes, that'll have to be an ordinance change of the land development code.
I don't think anybody has an objection to that, it's just more knowledge for us, right? Everybody okay with that? Okay, as long as, make it, make it succinct and brief.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, the last thing is, we have the multi-municipality meeting coming up, I think on the 26th, um, so we only have one more business meeting prior to that. And I just wanted to, um, put out two ideas to, um, you all with regards to things that I thought might be worthwhile to bring forth, and then kind of just implant, maybe start thinking about, um, some things you would like me to bring up during that next meeting, so that at the business meeting, we can discuss it. Um, one of the ideas that I think would be worthwhile is, um, working in collaboration with the county, Flagler Beach, and Bunnell, on just kind of putting out there what events we have for our teens and our seniors. There was a comment during city council last week or the week before about having a senior center, and that spurred me kind of getting out into the community and asking them, hey, do you think we need a senior center? And the, the comment was made, well, no, we really need a youth center, but we already have a youth center. The problem is, I don't think a lot of people know about it. So I, I would like to, um, speak with the county, um, and use their resources and maybe some of our other city resources as well, to just, um, getting the word out on some of the events, the, the, the youth center, and, um, you know, how we can make those events, just, you know, put them out there more for our community, because I don't think they're being taken advantage of.
The only caution I would offer is that there was, there were, there was discussion about the actual focus or the scope of that committee, and I'm not sure that's been resolved yet. There was some members of the, some elected members of that group wanted it to be rather narrow-focused on the impact on Flagler Beach. And, I don't know, has it been broadened? I'm not clear on that yet.
Well, um, until they tell me no, I think we should try to use it to all of our benefit. I, I don't know that, um, you know, I, I think that would be a very unfair narrowing by the city of Flagler Beach, and I don't think that was the intent.
Oh.
I, I, I want to say that it was really a, a, a committee created to deal with the influx of population to all of us. Um, and I, I do think that this is something that goes hand-in-hand with that, because as we're growing, we are getting younger families, we are getting more teens.
So why don't we ask for a copy of the agenda that, I don't think we're, we're responsible for publishing it, I think someone else is, and see if it's...
We're asked, but, but we're asked to bring forth things to propose, to put on the agenda.
Okay, what I'd like to look at is what, what that agenda has, and then we can add to it. How's that?
That's fine, that's what I'm asking, that's why I'm bringing forth these things today, is so that, is so that you all can think about...
Because I think it's, uh, you and I are the reps for that, if I remember correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, the other, the only other thing is, maybe working collaboratively, um, for grants for things like FDOT, because I, I think if we can work collaboratively as a county to try to get some of these grants, we might have some more success. I don't know what that looks like, but I think it's worth discussion.
That, that is the method of the, of the TPO, so it's, it's done on a county basis.
Okay.
And now, and now the entire county is included, so it's, it's all one big pot now.
Okay, so I guess to your point earlier, maybe some more updates from the, what's going on with the TPO would be worthwhile.
Yes, the, the, the actual, the, the calls to action and the plans that are in the, in the pot would be very helpful.
Okay, so again, any, any ideas that you all have and could bring forth on the 16th would be great.
I would just caution, because I think the mayor already has, that that committee is sort of focused, and I don't want to see it...
Well, I don't know, I, I, I'm not saying it is, I just...
Government.
I know that there were...
No.
I'm not sure that we ever came to a final in, in that discussion, so I'm, I'm not clear on its mission.
Perhaps at the next meeting, that might be something we want to put on the agenda.
For sure, so, so being prepared with, um, suggestions from city council members would be ideal, that would be a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want to see it become some sort of expanded government above us all.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't either, but at the same time, I don't want to keep showing up to a meeting that's simply about how we help the city of Flagler Beach. I don't think, I don't think that's a fair request at all.
I'm with you on that, on the, I'm with you.
Yeah, so I mean...
So maybe some, when you guys do meet, come back to us with some sort of direction from what they're all talking about and where they want to go with it.
Okay, understood.
I think there's consensus, on, on your original request, I think that, that we're there.
And we'll see, we'll see what they say and...
We'll, we'll, we'll qualify what they're all about.
Right, sure.
Okay, um, final comments from city council?
Well, actually, the, um, the question that I had has already really been addressed, because I had been, um, in conversation with one of the constituents from here in the city, and they requested information about the forensic audit, and also had there been an RFP put out for it. But that question has already been addressed and answered, and thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you, Danko for asking that question. And also, I would like to see it considered, and Councilwoman Pontieri mentioned it, about more things that will be made available for senior citizens here in the city of Palm Coast, if we could look at some more things that we could provide for them. And that's my comment.
Uh, I have, I have no further comment. I appreciate, uh, law enforcement specifically, but I'm a bit at time crunch, so thank you.
I do want to add one more thing. Uh, somebody today during public comment made a reference about real estate agents. And I know, Ms. Hyder is a real estate agent, I know David is a real estate agent, my better half, Renee, is a real estate agent. When you go to buy or sell your home, who are you going to call? Ghostbusters? You're going to call a real estate agent. We're not, real estate agents like you, Kathy, or Renee, you don't control big developments or anything of that nature. You deal with, you know, single-family homes, selling one, buying one. And I'm just a little tired of the attacks on real estate agents.
I agree.
And, and, and it's not, what has nothing to do with what some folks are imagining, and I think maybe when that comes up again, we might be a little bit more clearer on it. I know you work hard, Kathy, I know David works hard, I know Renee works really hard. And, um, you're not building developments, you're selling homes, you're selling futures, you're, you're, you're creating, you know, a whole lot of the American dream. And so I just wanted to let you know I support you. I'm not a real estate agent, and, um, again, who are they going to call? An auto mechanic? I don't think so, that's what you call...
Well, another thing was that, I... I didn't feel that it was right for him to bring up the fact that your better half is a real estate agent, because...
She's my girlfriend.
What does that have to do with you up here on city council? The fact that she's your girlfriend? I didn't think that that was fair to you.
But even if I was a real estate agent like you, you're selling individual homes, you're helping people find a future home.
All right, let me, let me, no, no, and I appreciate it, let me...
Oh, I support you guys.
Let, let, thank you, let me help you with that. I will go ahead and ask the city attorney, not now, but to give me a, a very brief prepared statement, so that should somebody go to the podium and talk about a conflict of interest, that we are clear with the charter and our responsibilities, okay?
If, if I may, to Mayor, because I, I do agree with you, Councilman. I mean, I got chastised for practicing real estate law, um, you know, as a part of the overall practice that I do.
Well, that's different, only kidding.
Yeah, yeah, I know, curse the lawyers, right? Um, no, I, I, I appreciate your point. What I think is kind of more the issue is ensuring that we up here are, if there are any conflicts, um, that we are disclosing them, meaning if we're on, on any boards, if we have any vested interest in any developments that are coming forward, or if there could be even the appearance of impropriety, um, that we're being very transparent. And I'm hoping that maybe that will alleviate some of the concerns. I know there's forms that we fill out, I know that when we all, if it's quasi-judicial, we reveal whether or not we've had any, um, ex-party communications. But just being very clear, if there's any stake that any of us ever have in a development. I know I turn down business because I don't I know I turn down business because I don't want there to be an appearance of impropriety pretty often. So, you know, just making sure that we're really staying on top of that is really the key, I think, to earning the public's trust in this regard. But generally speaking, I do agree.
City Attorney, any comments for today?
No, thank you very much.
City Manager?
Mayor, I do have one. I'll be brief, but I think it's important. Over the course of having this meeting, we've been monitoring correspondence from Flagler County Emergency Management about the storm that's coming. We expect winds to start as we speak with it peaking storms at 4:00 PM roughly. We can't overly predict that timing. But I'm actually going to ask Chief Barry Hill to approach, because we are taking actions, including news releases to update.
And if I may, may I excuse myself? I have to take my dad to the cardiologist at 2:00 PM. So if you don't mind, guys, that's okay with you guys?
Contempt, everybody. Good. Okay, please do. Good luck.
Have a good day.
Good luck, Councilman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So we're under a tornado watch here in Flagler County right now, which means that we should be ready to be ready, essentially. So when you're under a tornado watch, that's a very large area. I think there was 10 or 15 counties associated with the current watch. We've definitely in Florida already experienced damage from this weather in other parts of the state. And as it gets closer to us, as Ms. Bevan stated, we're expecting the weather to be, we were in touch, her and I, today with Jonathan Lord, our county emergency manager. So we just want our residents, you know, unfortunately, our residents are aware of how to deal with these kind of situations and our staff to be prepared to seek shelter, to, you know, have a plan for some things like that. My understanding is that some of our local other partner agencies like Flagler County Schools have canceled all activities associated, like after school activities this evening. I believe our Parks and Rec has also put something out saying that our parks will be closed this evening and many of our activities that would normally go on tonight will not. And there's some other things that we're talking about in the city for today, but as usual, our staff is prepared to respond. And hopefully, this is preparation for us to just weather another rainy day. But we got to be ready 100 times. I tell the Little Leaguers that I coach, you got to be ready 100 times to make one play. And so being ready is what our plan is.
And City Manager, so there will be updates available on our website throughout the evening? Or how does that work? Or what, tell us what residents that may be listening should do to stay current?
Chief, I would say the point of contact is Flagler County Emergency Management to get that real time information.
That's correct. But I also think that following us on our social media accounts is really one of the best ways in these situations to stay in touch. Ms. Kershaw and her team do a great job of making sure that everything that county emergency management puts out, that they put out for our residents, and also Palm Coast specific things that sometimes occur. We have a great partnership. And so both of those areas cross post. We also think that you should sign up for Alert Flagler. That helps to let us know if our status changes. It's something that you can do both from the city or the county website. So, and it's a way for you to, you know, receive a text message alert. That's what, that's how me and Ms. Johnson found out today, a text message alert saying that we were under a tornado watch.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that.
Nothing further.
I would add a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.